The regular scheduled meeting of the Wichita Board of Education is now called to order. Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We appreciate you being here tonight and everyone who will be watching this on their devices either live or at a future time, yes, future time, so we appreciate you joining us. If you'll join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by the Krista McCullough Academy, CMA, JROTC cadets led by Zoe Waiti, Cadet First Sergeant, Nicholas Richmeyer, Cadet Master Sergeant, Brennan Carter, Cadet Sergeant First Class, and Sarah Lawrence, Cadet Corporal. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order colors.
Join me in a round of applause for the CMA Academy, JROTC, led by Staff Sergeant Coleman. Patrick, I think we're ready for the first item.
First item, under Reports, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Israel Torres and I'm a junior in the Engineering Magnet at Northeast Magnet High School. I am in Base and in Rise Up For Youth. I am really grateful to have this opportunity to speak on behalf of the high school students in our district.
Hi, everyone. My name's Alexis Youngman. I'm a senior at Northeast and I'm in the Law Magnet. This is my second year being in Super SAC and I'm very excited to be here.
At our first Super SAC meeting, we started off with the check-in circle and everyone gave their favorite ice cream flavor. And oddly enough, someone's favorite flavor was lobster ice cream. I also learned that me and Alicia Thompson also love, both love butter pecan. After the check-in circle, we were split into groups and tasked to create a poster that described our ideal teacher. This is the poster that we made. Alexis did the beautiful work because I have the artistic skills of a two-year-old.
Once we were split up into groups, we all started talking about what makes our ideal teacher. And the first thing that came to mind was my law teacher. His name is Mr. Kuckelman. And one thing that I really appreciate that he does is he lets his students know when they're doing a good job. One instance that comes to mind was it was our first time doing mock trial, which is super, super intimidating. And it did not go at all the way I wanted it to. And I was super upset and I think he could tell. And then the next day, he called me up to his desk. He said, Alexis, I just want to let you know, you're doing a good job. The first day of trial doesn't usually go the way you want it, but just stick with it and you'll get better. And that's exactly what I did. And ever since, he's been my favorite teacher. That's been my favorite class. And I think a lot of times, teachers just assume, you know, if you're doing a good job or not. And I don't think that's always the case. And even, either way, just that little bit of encouragement just makes all the difference.
And for me, I immediately thought of Ms. Yodergraber, who is my ideal teacher. What makes her my ideal teacher is her willingness to improve her teaching and adapt to our learning styles. I love how she asks us for feedback.
Mr. Kuckelman does the same thing. At the end of a unit or at the end of a semester, he'll assign us a questionnaire that we fill out. He'll ask us, what did you learn? How, what helped you learn? And what can I do better for students next year? I've had him for two years and he, I've noticed he applies a lot of the feedback that we give him.
Ms. Yodergraber is compassionate, which builds relationships with students and as a result equates to academic success. I like how she is genuinely concerned for your well-being and success.
I think relationships are super important as well. I think the best teachers have a fun class environment while still being able to like maintain the learning. I think the best teachers almost feel like a friend, someone you can confide in. I also really appreciate when teachers make time to help you find opportunities outside of the classroom and make time outside of just class time to help you out, whether it's like after school, Saturday school.
And when we do not understand concepts, she takes it into account and spends extra time teaching us the material. She does not make you feel down when you are struggling.
I think patience is super important. I appreciate it when teachers realize that the material is new to you and it might come faster to others than it might to you. It's really discouraging whenever teachers are maybe snappy when you ask them a question and make you feel like kind of dumb for asking that question. But when teachers are nice and understanding and help you to understand the question, it makes students feel more comfortable to go up to them and ask questions. And when we feel comfortable to ask questions, obviously it's going to help us to learn better.
And Ms. Yodergraber, she reviews concepts that we went over through the week at the beginning of class to see our understanding. It forces us to look back at our notes so that it embeds the material into our brains. She makes fun experiments in labs that help us apply our learning. Instead of, instead of hearing her drone about the concept, she has us actively apply our critical thinking skills to the lab we are doing. She does competitive review games, which makes reviewing engaging. The games also encourage students to learn the material so they can perform better on tests and also have bragging rights.
I'm personally a really big fan of the competitive review games. When I know there's a review game, the next day I spend all night studying so I can be all of my classmates. I have like active rivalries with several of my law classmates. Also, I think when teachers being respectful is super, super important. Obviously respectful towards the students, but just also towards other teachers. I feel like when teachers remain professional, don't talk about maybe drama going, going, like happening amongst the staff, it just makes me feel like I can respect them more because they just maintain that professional demeanor. Also, I cannot learn when teachers just lecture at me the entire hour. So it's really important to me that my teachers are engaging with me, with all the students, whether that's asking for questions, asking us, does that make sense? Maybe even asking our opinion on the topic. And then to piggyback off of that, I am not good at math. I hate math. But I feel more willing to learn when my math teachers explain why what we're learning is going to be helpful to me in the future and why we're learning it.
And since I'm a junior, this was my first Super SAC meeting and it was a great experience. Despite the craziness at our schools, it was good to see students from different backgrounds come together and have similar ideas about our ideal teachers.
We would both just like to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to share our opinions on behalf of all the students in our district. I think it's really great that we go to school in a district that wants to hear student voices, so thank you guys. And with that, does anyone have any questions for us?
Cheryl?
Yes, thank you very much for that excellent presentation. And I really like how you described your teachers. And my guess is you both had a teacher in mind as you were doing that, correct?
Yeah.
But you really described a whole lot of our teachers. We have excellent teachers that want to be engaging and want to have the kids learn. And so I am so proud of you. Thank you very much. And it was great presentation. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to see that poster.
Oh, right. Nice.
Did you do some of the writing? You're not giving me some of the writing.
I did the bubble letters.
That's great. Did you show it to everybody out there? And one more thing. Are either of you intending to be a teacher?
It's a great career, just not for me.
Well, you're young.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe you'll change your mind.
Hazel?
Hi, I was able to attend the Super, Super SAC Saturday that you had last year. Can you explain to us how you're selected to be in the Super SAC?
Um, so I'm pretty sure I was nominated by one of my teachers. I just know one day I got a pass and it was when they were testing people who they thought had COVID. So I was like, oh no, they're taking me down to test me for COVID. But it was actually my vice principal was like, do you want to be in Super SAC? I was like, um, what is that? And then he explained to me what it was and I was like, yeah, I'd love to be in it. I don't know how you.
So basically, we were working on our magnet projects and I got a pass to go to Ms. Marick's room. So first I thought I was like in big trouble. But then she, then he told me that, hey, a bunch of teachers recommended you to represent our high school. And he asked me if I was interested and of course I said yes.
And how many students are, participate? How many students are selected from each school?
Um, I believe, I'm not sure if all the schools, I believe it's one female and one male from each school. I, oh, from East Lasher though, there were two girls, so I'm not exactly sure.
Is it okay? If I speak? Okay. There are two from each of the high schools, comprehensive and special alternative schools. And so we have approximately maybe twenty-two or so of them. And I meet with them once a month with my team and they generate the topics, what they want to talk about. And they tell us a lot of good things and they tell us things we need to work on and we have a good time doing it. And so I, those are my trusted partners in making our district a better place to work and play and learn. And I enjoy them immensely.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Good News.
Welcome, Wendy.
It is such a delight to get to work with the young people on Super SAC every month. And we will be having a Super, Super SAC Dialogue, the large group of about 110 kids, a little later this fall. So we'll look forward to inviting you to that so you have a chance to hear their feedback. In the meantime, we have three fabulous Good News items tonight that really allow us to kind of capture the essence of what they were saying about teachers that are mentors that lift them up and support their success. All three of the items that we celebrate tonight will allow you to recognize those individuals in some form or fashion. So I'm excited with the Education Edge item. It's hard to believe this is the 20th anniversary and I'm dating myself because I was around for all 20 of those years. And it's been a really amazing journey to see how the Edge has transformed our school district. And if you can believe in the 20 years that the Edge has been in action, more than $1.7 million has been invested in teacher mini-grants, in grants to our athletics areas for needs that oftentimes budget wouldn't cover. And likewise for fine arts, if you've ever seen, I love when our students present you with ceramic items, with fired items, because the Edge investments have placed kilns, very nice kilns, in so many of our schools. There are some transformative things that have been done with the Education Edge. And again, almost $2 million into classrooms through that work. You will have a chance to hear from Holly Wilson, who manages the Edge, from Caleb Stoppel, who oversees the athletics funds. And I'm pleased right now to introduce you to the gentleman that needs no introduction, Mr. Sean Chastain, who has also been with the Edge since the beginning and oversees the fine arts gift funds and the annual allocation of Edge proceeds into our fine arts programs. So without further ado, he's already down here. He knows, he knows the routine. Mr. Sean Chastain, to tell you more about the Education Edge Fine Arts Mini Grant.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Wendy. And Education Edge, for this opportunity to address Superintendent Thompson, President Reeser, and members of the board, many of who are coming to Saturday's Arts and Education Celebration at the Wichita Art Museum, also to be here with an audience of extremely supportive district leaders, staff, and community members, and creative grant writers and winners. This is obviously the perfect time to talk about Education Edge Fine Arts. WPS Fine Arts is extremely grateful for the Education Edge Gift Fund with its established priorities of beginning band and orchestra instruments, visual arts equipment, and auditorium upgrades. As Wendy said, these expenditures would be very challenging to budgets at the building level. Education Edge Band and Orchestra totals have included the purchase of almost 300 band and orchestra instruments to be added to our district inventory, greatly enhancing our ability to provide instrument access to all participating students and families. Examples of Edge visual arts equipment include, as mentioned, electronic kilns, pottery wheels, printing presses, banding wheels, clay mixers, dry rack, drying racks, paper cutters. And having these enhancements in our WPS K-12 visual arts rooms greatly strengthens our teachers' capability with 200 visual arts equipment items to provide a comprehensive visual arts program. Auditorium upgrades have included over the last 20 years, almost 300 sound and lighting equipment items for our district. Our students deserve to be seen and heard at every level, so additional requests have included the purchase of 12 portable sound systems for elementary school performances. And I want to close by celebrating two of our most exciting and innovative projects, both of which have been very well documented by WPS Strategic Communications. Ten custom painted scenery backdrops created and completed by some of Wichita's top professional designers, WPS students and staff. And each backdrop was just completed in a matter of days. Mr. Reeser, remember you came over and saw one at AMAC when it was in production. And of course, our commissioned piece in honor of WPS's 150th year, accompanied by elementary, middle school, and high school voices, which it was written for and also accompanied by a full orchestra, yet another event where many at this table were at its premiere. Education Edge is a perfect example of how arts and athletics, with their strong emphasis on team building and self-reflection, are suited to connect, unite, and unite our students' interest in learning through collaboration while simultaneously fostering creativity, critical thinking, and communication. So thank you, WPS BOE District Leadership and Education Edge for enhancing WPS Fine Arts students to dream, believe, and achieve. It's been my pleasure to follow tonight's opener, but I think I'm the warm-up for Education Edge's true headliner and introducing tonight's awardees. My pleasure to introduce WPS Grants Administrator Holly Wilson.
Thank you, Sean.
Welcome, Holly.
Hi. How is everyone this evening? I am going to wear Caleb Stoppel's hat for just a moment because he could not be here this evening. He is en route actually back to town. So I'm going to cover a few athletic updates and then we'll move on to education or to mini-grants. Caleb Stoppel was pleased to say that he wanted to say thank you first for Education Edge and everybody's support. Over the last 20 years, Education Edge's impact to athletics has been $402,000. Most recently, those were athletic training tables at each high school, which was highly important and highly requested. We had some people that were making their own and using old ones with duct tape. It was very unsafe, so this was a big deal for all of our high schools. There was an investment of new diving boards and decks at select high schools. We had tractors, or new tractor purchased with cleaning and sanitizing implements for our turf fields, a football scoreboard at Northwest Stadium, six basketball scoreboards in secondary gyms, and those went to West Heights and South. And then they also purchased four portable wrestling scoreboards for use around the district. Now, this adds on to the multiple gives that Edge supports for uniforms across the district as well. That's always been a big investment for Education Edge. The athletics fund through Education Edge ensures that our students do stay in the game. So I'm going to put on my hat for mini-grants now. Education Edge has been supporting innovation in the classroom and for, and for over the past 20 years, the mini-grants fund has awarded over $775,000 to teachers and certified support staff across the district. Tonight, we will recognize the first round of awardees for the year totaling $30,000. This also includes an additional give this year of $300 to each brand new teacher. We began this last year and we're doing it again this year. And that's an additional investment of $60,000 for our teachers to get their classrooms up and going. This has been very popular. It's new and it's something we do want to continue to do year after year. I'd like to bring to Donna Neal up to the podium. She is our specialist for our grants department. She works closely with our Edge awardees. She is going to let you know who our winners are. Grantees, when you hear your name, please head down to the podium. This will be for Education Edge grant, mini-grant winners.
All right. Northwest High, Alma Aglano, Modern Classroom Project. Earhart Elementary, Elise Kratz, Sensory Garden and Self-Regulation Books. South High, Jacqueline Nessaminto Adenhammer, Who Wants to be an Engineer. Pleasant Valley Middle School, Jayden Brown, How to Increase Literacy Skills, Choice Reading with a Focus on Student Interests. Robinson Middle School, Jen Pillage, Girls United. Northeast High, Jennifer Larson, Design Your Community. Cloud Elementary, Jennifer Pollard, Learning with Mindful Movement. Pleasant Valley Middle School, Jessica Rodriguez, Increasing Literacy Through Choice and Representation in Texts. Covevin Elementary, Kristy Lucas, ESOL, Newcomer Science-Based Readings Project. East High, Kyle Broadfoot, Greenhouse Farm. Kinsler Elementary, Laura Hubler, Recorder Project. Sowers Alternative High, Lisa McIntyre, Hands-on Science Lab. McLean Elementary, Melissa Wiant, Coding Critters. Benton Elementary, Shannon Alberg, Interactive Book Choice. Krista McCullough, Sherri Rose, Outdoor Classroom Garden. And Stucky Middle School, Tammy Gorgeous, Classroom Production Center.
So each of these award winners, and it's a busy night at schools tonight, so we, we didn't have everybody able to come, but each of these award winners all received $1,000 for their classroom for their chosen project. All right, you guys can go sit down. For our next round of winners, I'm going to bring up Tammy Hernandez from Coke Industries. Since 2005, Coke has been a steadfast partner to Education Edge, funding STEM and entrepreneurship innovation through their classroom grants. I'd like to bring up Tammy and she's going to introduce this year's winners. The Coke Classroom Grant winners each got $3,000 for their classroom this year. We had four winners, total of $12,000.
Good evening. Thank you, board members, for having me tonight. At Coke, we believe that education enables students to discover, develop, and apply their unique abilities to find success and fulfillment in their lives. The Coke Classroom Grants Program is an example of this belief in action. It provides an opportunity for educators to think outside the box on how to deliver education in intriguing ways to better reach their students. Since 2005, Coke and the Coke Family Foundation have been proud to be a part of this program. The following recipients each received funding towards a STEM-focused project in their classroom during this calendar year. So start looking for the results of these exciting projects. East High, Christopher Garza, Color Graphing Calculators. Riverside Elementary, Darla Brown, it's a word you don't hear every day, verma composting or composting with worms. Dodge Elementary, Stephanie Spurger, Writing Code and Performing Instrumental Compositions. And from Allison Middle School, Steve Smith, for Next Level Robotics. Thank you for having me.
I'd like to thank our winners as well. I know they all worked hard on their applications. We had so much fun reading them and seeing how they want to bring their classrooms to life with these funds. Tammy, you have been with us for quite some time and we appreciate your support. On behalf of the Edge Committee, I'd like to present Coke with a challenge coin as a small thank you for everything that you do. These are our new Edge challenge coins that we're giving to our donors this year. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting and we'll put this on our shelf to display for the company to see. We definitely have had a very exciting history with this program. We're pleased to continue to be a part of it.
And last but not least, this year, we were very thankful to HCA Wesley for their donation of $10,000 to Education Edge to create the first ever mental wellness grants that allowed our student support teams to create safe spaces for their students within their schools. I'd like to introduce Scott Evans from Wesley to recognize those winners.
My name is Scott Evans. I'm with Wesley Healthcare. It's an honor to be here tonight to speak with you, board members, so many faces I recognize. Hi, Cheryl, it's been a long time. And hi, Dr. Thompson as well. And hi, Sean. And I'll say hi to others here in a moment. I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to say that Wesley and our parent company, HCA Healthcare, partnered with an organization called EverFi. In the height of the pandemic, in October of 2020, that's when we began to offer mental wellness basics, a free mental wellness training to all students in Sedgwick County. And what's exciting is, is just this past spring, North High School, where we are now, every student in the school went through this free training that lasted about an hour. So we are highly invested in this. And our HCA identified the Wichita School District as one of five districts across the country to send $10,000 to, to an unrestricted gift. And so working with Holly, she thought this would be a perfect opportunity to work with Education Edge for these mental wellness grants. So without further ado, I want to announce this year's winners. At Cloud Elementary, for their Safe Zone, we have Angela McGee and her team members of Sherry Nesselroth, Madeline Crawford, Carrie Frye, and Jamie Westerhouse. Again, if you're here, you can come down. We'll allow that. White Elementary, I know these ladies are here. Yeah. Emily McCray and her team members, Shereen Williams, Sarah Johnson, and Lacey Thule, for their Regulation Suite. At Benton Elementary, Jenna Pike and her team members of Ashley Phyllis, Addie Schroeder, Janelle Edwards, and Jennifer King, for their Zen Zones, Teaching Emotional Regulation Strategies. At Bryant Opportunity Elementary, Makita White and her team members, Elaine Fulenwider, Javen McEwen, and Kayla Price, for their Therapeutic Classroom. I really wish I was back in elementary for all of these. I think this would be cool. At Griffith Elementary, Natalie Henning and her team members of Tara Byrd and Kelsey Masterson, for their Action-Based Learning Lab. At Southeast High School, Sarah Watkins Mace and team members of Deja Ares, Renee McFalls and Emily Scott, for their Chill Club. And then at Jordan Middle School, we have Stacy Larson and team members of Deb Romero, Don Meek, Matt Bortnick, Katie Pierce. That's you?
That's Katie.
Thank you, thank you. No, that's, that's good. I appreciate that. That's why I wear this name tag. Gaila McCullough and Rachel Ellis for their Serenity Now. Congratulations.
Thank you, Scott, for your support of Wichita Public Schools and Education Edge. On behalf of the Edge Committee, I also would like to present HCA Wesley with a challenge coin as a small token of our appreciation and our work that you helped us with this year.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Board of Education and District Leadership for your continued support of Education Edge. It is making a difference every single day in the eyes of our students. We are on the cusp of our yearly campaign. Please be on the lookout for ways to give and how you can get one of those shiny Edge Challenge Coins for yourself. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Do I have any questions before I go?
It's so cool to see where a dream can go with committed people that pour everything they have into making it a success. And Holly is so connected and focused on success. I said, "Man, those challenge coins are really awesome." She said, "You're going to have to increase your pledge." Okay, cool. I get that, I appreciate, I appreciate her directness, so.
Good job Holly.
So this next item is a new item for us and I think it's really exciting. You are accustomed to Colonel Hester recognizing current students, and I think I see some current students here, but I also know there are some past JROTC students. That tonight's item is going to allow you to celebrate for their success and their ongoing support of the work. So another gentleman that needs no introduction, Colonel Robert Hester.
Thank you, thank you President Reiser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. Appreciate your time. Then I have to tell you some more about Junior ROTC, you know, throughout the school year. I try to keep you informed of the activities that Junior ROTC does throughout the year. But the purpose this evening is to tell you, or has, let some of our former cadets tell you about how Junior ROTC has impacted them and their lives after high school. And you already know about one of our former cadets, Board Member Diane Albert. Diane has been a very successful general contractor, you know, since she left high school. And so she, she needs no introduction. But our, our current district staff is going to introduce, you know, some other of our former Junior ROTC cadets, so that they can talk to you about, you know, what they've done since they graduated from high school. And I'm going to turn this over to our Core Commander Carol Laura, who will introduce our first guest.
Oh, I am a lot shorter than I thought. Members of the Board, Superintendent Thompson, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carol Marisolara and I'm the District Core Commander. I would like to introduce to you Wichita Police Officer Jake Hall. He was a East High graduate in 2016.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you today about my experience as a JROTC Cadet. My name is Jacob Hall, as I was already introduced, and I graduated from East High School in 2016. I participated in the East High Air Force JROTC Program throughout all four years of high school. As a new freshman, I felt overwhelmed with the sheer size of the school and number of the people at the school. But tucked away in the basement of East High, I found my home away from home. After walking into the JROTC room and speaking with my fellow cadets, I immediately knew that I was around an outstanding group of young men and women who were motivated and excited about their futures. The older cadets did not hesitate to take the younger cadets under their wings and make them feel more comfortable. I then met the JROTC instructors at the time, Master Sergeant Troy Summers and Lieutenant Colonel Mike George. It started to make sense how and why the cadets I had just met were so willing to lend a helping hand and show me the ropes around the school. They had two fantastic mentors who demonstrated the epitome of what it is to be a firm but fair leader. Over the next four years, I participated heavily in JROTC. I was on the drill and color guard teams, and during my senior year was the commander of both teams. Being a member of the drill and color guard teams was a commitment that consisted of being at school at 5:30 every morning. Some days the mornings were long, and some days I told myself that I would much rather have slept in than be at school at 5:30. However, I showed up every morning because the team was counting on me and I was counting on them. If one person was absent from drill or color guard practice, it threw everything off. This was how I learned the importance of the role of even just one person in an organization. Everybody has an important role and should know their value, even if they have to be reminded of it by others. Around holidays like Memorial Day and Veterans Day, groups of cadets would go to assisted living homes and spend time with veterans who were in the latter years of their lives. I would sit with veterans of World War II and hear their stories firsthand. One gentleman explained to me what it was like to storm the beaches of Normandy and the impact that it had on him forever. As a young man, hearing these stories had a huge impact on me myself. I learned that sometimes you have to make sacrifices to help other people, whether that be as small as taking time out of your busy day to help someone, or as big as fighting a war so that others can enjoy their freedom. I could speak to you all day about the experiences I had and the valuable lessons I learned as a JROTC Cadet. As a Cadet, I learned the importance of accountability, I learned to take pride in my school, my city, and my nation. I learned things that seem to lack more and more every day in society. I currently work serving my community as a Wichita Police Officer for the Wichita Police Department. I know that without a doubt, I would not have been pulled to serve my community without my experiences and lessons I learned as a JROTC Cadet. The JROTC Program is full of outstanding people that know the importance of shaping our young men and women into leaders and people whose names you will one day know in your communities. Thank you for your time and your continued support of the JROTC Program. Does anyone have questions about my specific experience in the program or anything like that? No? Perfect. All right, thank you.
Hi, I am Core Command Sergeant Major Jordan Wilsey from Northwest High School. And I would like to introduce Mr. Bryce Turner, President of Hornet Cutting Machines and 1997 graduate of Northwest High School.
Thank you for that kind introduction. Well, it's my privilege to address the Board. Twenty-eight years ago, actually twenty-seven, I stood in front of this Board in competing for the best Cadet in Wichita. Twenty-eight years ago in 1994, there was an experiment in Wichita called Junior ROTC. It was in the newspaper, was this going to be? Are we trying to recruit kids to be in the military? And there was a lot of consternation around the community of what is this new thing coming to Wichita? I think we can say that it was a smashing success. At Northwest High School, I had Lieutenant Colonel Roy Yancezki and First Sergeant Phillips. They taught us discipline, they taught us honor, they taught us work ethic. Some of my first experiences in Junior ROTC were first for public speaking, where Colonel Yancezki challenged me to present for the first time. I was scared to death. Stood up, had a public speaking engagement, thought I would never do it. I did it because I didn't want to let my commanding officer down. My first experience in conflict resolution in a productive and professional manner in our first Cadet Staff Meeting where we had high emotions and high intensity and differences of opinion. And being able to talk through that with the coaching and mentorship of our Junior ROTC instructors has set me up for success in the future. Following my time and experience in Junior ROTC, I went on to K-State as a Cadet, received an Army Scholarship, served on active duty for eight years, deployed to Iraq, led soldiers. And the foundation of that leadership and the desire to do that came out of my experience in Junior ROTC. Fast forwarding to today, as a business owner of five businesses, I'll tell you that one of the number one things that we need is leadership. We need integrity, we need people that are team-focused versus individual focus, and we need people that understand the broader vision that if we work together, we're ultimately better and more effective than the individuals. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you guys.
Okay, I would like to introduce Ms. Lisa Baldwin Bateman. She graduated East High School in 2004.
I appreciate you all taking time to get to know us, the former JROTC cadets that look probably really old to these guys now. I am a 2004 East High graduate. I was in the JROTC Program there under Lieutenant Colonel Mike George and Master Sergeant April Floyd during my time there. I was also part of the IB Program. Following graduation, I actually went to the US Air Force Academy, which had been my dream since I saw it on television in the eighth grade. I remember watching the TV show and I wanted to be an engineer just like the person at NASA and go work with space somehow. Since then, life has changed a lot. I actually did not end up graduating from the Air Force Academy. While there, I was participating in a group activity with the Equestrian Club and was thrown off a horse and sustained a traumatic brain injury. I lost the sight in my left eye for about a week. It mixed up all kinds of languages in my head and I would respond in Spanish, thinking I was speaking Russian, which I was learning at the time. And then I would hear questions in English when they were actually getting, given to me in Russian, so it was all kinds of mixed up for a few weeks. After about a year of trying to figure out what was going on with me, the Air Force put me on a temporary disability retirement list. And while I was on that list, I actually moved down to Texas Christian University, TCU in Fort Worth, the only other school I'd visited after graduating. And I was determined not to move home and go to Wichita State and live with my parents. So I went to TCU and I finished my degrees there and after that, it was about three years, I ended up with two bachelor's degrees because of all the credits I had from the Air Force Academy. Through all that time, I was able to keep in touch with all of my JROTC family. Just kind of like what Jake talked about when he first came to East High that very first day, the very first day I met my JROTC group, I knew I was going to be fine. Every time I saw him in the hallway, they did not mind saying hi to me, even though I was a freshman and I was trying to hide in the hallway, they'd be like, "Hey Lisa, what's going on? How are you? Are you lost? Where can I show you how to go?" It was a lot of fun and I've kept in touch with most of them. We have, out of my group alone that I can think of right now, we have activists, we have physicians, nurses, firemen, police officers, just like Jake, sheriffs deputies, we have realtors, actors, and politicians that came out of our group. Some of them are in the military currently, some served and are out now, and some never served, but they still, when I asked them in the last couple of weeks after Colonel Hester approached me to do this tonight, they all said, "Oh hey, make sure to tell them, you know, it's the only place that I learned about citizenship. It's the only place I learned what it means to have an American flag and all the rules about the flag. It's the only place I actually learned what leadership qualities are and how to do different types of meetings and how to address different groups of people, how to stimulate good conversation and conflict resolution instead of arguing back and forth over a table." And as they mentioned all these things, I realized that it really was the only place I learned about the flag and citizenship and I took that for granted at the time, but I don't now. So, thank you very much for involving us in this, thank you for continuing the program. JROTC, I think, is a very impactful organization to have available in schools to everybody, even if they don't plan to serve in the military later on. I do know some of my classmates joined after seeing me in my uniform, they had never really considered it before, and one of them for sure, he currently serves as a Realtor for a company in Washington DC and did not end up joining the military, but did think about it for a little while. But he still credits JROTC with giving him the organizational and public speaking ability to go on and be a Realtor, which he never thought he'd do either. So, thank you very much.
What is your career now?
Oh yeah, sorry, I never got to that, I guess. I am currently a flight paramedic, so after I finished TCU, I wasn't sure what to do with my life because I wasn't going to be getting back in the Air Force anytime soon. So I went to paramedic school at Hutchinson Community College and then graduated as a paramedic and then became a flight paramedic after a few years. So, I was at work, picked up my daughter, and came here, so that's what I do now. So I fly on the fixed wing here in Wichita and go kind of all over the nation. Yep.
I am the Deputy Commander for the Corps and I would like to introduce Ms. Callie Hopkirk, the 2013 graduate of Heights High School.
Well hello, Board of Education. It's been a little while, but I am happy to be back. I was reminiscing as I was driving back to North High School. I was here about four years ago with a unique experience. I was a long-term substitute within the North High JROTC Program in addition to my background as a JROTC Cadet. So I got to see both sides of the coin and gained a new appreciation for all of our instructors and Colonel Hester. So a little bit about me, I actually started in the Leadership Program at Brooks Middle School under Gunny Sergeant Dennis and Tech Sergeant Moody at the time. And now I then went on to Heights High School and experienced wonderful instructors there. And so Colonel Hester tasked me to speak about JROTC in two minutes, and that's impossible. It really is. It was my life and I loved it and I still do. These cadets are amazing. The instructors that you have are amazing and the quality of the individuals that are produced from this program are just incredible and the experiences that they get are undescribable. My group was the special group that got to go on to Paris, France, and Orleans, France with a color guard. And so we traveled with former Mayor Carl Brewer and got to present the colors at a global scale. I've never heard chants about the USA before while presenting the colors and so that was just absolutely amazing. And so I get to talk a little bit now about what I do and what I do would not be possible without JROTC. So I worked within USD 259 for a little while before moving on to my current position at Kansas State University Salina, where I get to help high school students and middle school students pursue their career and possibilities in terms of college. And so I work as an admissions representative specialist. I would have never had the opportunity to public speak the way I do or get up in front of individuals and not be scared without it being for JROTC. And so, you know, last week I was in Florida, got to meet with individuals from NASA, and that is not a possibility that I would have ever had without JROTC. So thank you Colonel Hester, thank you staff, thank you Board of Education.
We had one other speaker that was supposed to be here tonight, but something must have happened. Nadine Abu Sherbi was not able to come, but Nadine also went through seven years of Junior ROTC along with two of her siblings, a brother and a sister. Their names are all on plaques in my office on how well they succeeded in Junior ROTC and the Leadership Program. Nadine is a Cadet at WSU this year and I know she is, she's doing very well and she would have had a good story to tell you. We had an opportunity tonight for you to hear about, hear from some of our cadets about their success after high school and how Junior ROTC has made them better citizens of our country. And that was our goal tonight, was to have them have an opportunity to tell you about their life after Junior ROTC. And we really appreciate the, your time and listening to our former cadets. We keep in contact with a lot of cadets throughout their life after Junior ROTC. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Colonel Hester, that was really special, thank you. Amazing stories. And many thanks to those of you in the audience, former cadets that came to share. That was, that was very moving. So our final item gives us a chance to celebrate some amazing community partners that came together this summer as part of our summer school programming. And I think sometimes it doesn't get the attention that it deserves, it being the phenomenal opportunities that we offer kids that they don't get anywhere else. And so here to tell you more about the opportunities that were made possible by the partners we're celebrating tonight is Kelly Beilefeld, who is Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. And you will get to hear about the programs and meet partner representatives. Thank you Kelly.
Welcome Kelly.
Good evening everyone. I believe you have handouts that are on the slides and we're going to be sharing these out, but you know, Dr. Hatfield was here a couple of weeks ago and she shared about all the different summer school things that we did within our district. Early on in the summer school process, we divided out things that were for credit and things that weren't for credit. So what Dr. Hatfield had talked about for summer school was all the kind of credit type things that we do. What I'm going to talk about tonight are other opportunities that kids had in the community that didn't necessarily get them credit, but gave them an awesome experience. So the first one is the makers of the planes and if Catherine would come And if Catherine would come down, I'm going to recognize our partners here. So the Maker of the Plains event was a week-long STEM camp for our middle school students. We had eighty, or sorry, 48 WPS students that were involved in this. And you can see all of the different middle schools that were involved there. I think all of these programs, one of the things that's important to point out is that these organizations take on a bunch of logistics and kids and transportation and bloody noses and all sorts of things that come up during summer school, right? And they do it just to help the community, right? They do it to help our kids and give them a great experience. And Makers of the Plains, I think, was new this year and I think it's probably something that will continue in the future. Also wanted to point out that our students from Brooks were able to go to Makers of the Plains for free. They were scholarshiped by Deloitte employees. And Deloitte is, has the new smart factory on the WSU Innovation Campus. So they were able to go completely free for the week. So I'd like to recognize WSU Tech and Catherine. Next up is Camp Hype and Chelsea is here. So the Workforce Center, Keith Long's here too. You met him a few months ago when we were talking about Road Trip Nation. But Chelsea is the boots-on-the-ground for Camp Hype. And if you've, Camp Hype is something that we've been doing for a number of years in coordination with the Workforce Center. And you can see there that Camp Hype, it's basically, we do week-long camps that are focused on different industry areas. Those numbers there are the number of WPS students we had participating in each of those. So the camp is more than just kind of learning about the career. It's also employability skills, handshakes, writing resumes, making cold calls. My son was able to participate in one for Spirit and he went over to Freddie's and had to get an application and had to ask for that. Right, it's all part of the process of, for 14- and 15-year-olds to learn about the world of work, learn about how to do these things right and appropriately. And at the end of the week, they get a paycheck if they show up and participate. And Chelsea and her team did an awesome job again this year. Our numbers bounced back after COVID and I think we're looking at doing more even next year. So thank you, Chelsea, for all your work. All right, and now if Nicole would come down from Job Prep in Tyrone, you can come too if you want. YMCA, as you know, is a great partner. They're here a lot. I feel like Tyrone comes to more board meetings than I do, so. But this is another program that's a little bit different than Camp Hype. Job Prep is one that we run through the spring semester and it's a weekly course that our kids take. We had it in a number of high schools last year. And it really is all about employability skills. This is targeted at kids that need to know how to work, how to find a job, how to show up on time. And then it carries into a job in the summer for those kids that are able to complete the course and participate. So we work, you know, strongly with YMCA and Nicole's team, look to expand again, I think, for this year. And you can see our statistics there, or their statistics there, that are just great numbers as far as the feedback from parents, feedback from students, placement rates, all of that kind of stuff. So definitely helping support our strategic plan and getting kids career-ready and future-ready. So we thank again Nicole and her team for all the work with Job Prep. All right, next up is Textron, and I don't know if Kate came tonight. Oh, Sam's here, all right. Thanks, Sam. They're like a, not a two-headed monster. That's kind of a negative connotation. But they're like a dynamic duo, dynamic duo, so. Again, you know, I have to, I don't know that we all in the community realize just the benefit that our kids get from these programs that partners like Textron just take on. They've been doing this for a number of years. They have a high school internship program in the summer. It's paid, it's six weeks, it's a great experience for our kids. You can see there the different schools that are represented. We had, you know, high school kids from all of those schools, 41 total students with 20 seniors, 18 juniors, three sophomores. And then they get a, you know, with our big employers like Textron, you know, they have all the jobs there, right? They have any job that we have a pathway for in the district. So they really can give all kids different experiences and different exposures, from accounting to engineering to aviation and everything in between. So again, great numbers again this year for this program. We look to continue and expand it next year. And thank you guys for all that you do. We really appreciate it. And last but not least is Spirit. And I know Alex is here, he can come on down. So Spirit, again, just like Textron in the same ways. They have a great relationship with us. We work with Alex all the time on all sorts of different opportunities for our kids. Their internship, they got launched this year. We had 11 of the 41 positions. And this was kind of post-COVID, coming out of that and look to ramp that up again and have a little bit stronger numbers next summer. But great experience for our kids, great feedback from the kids that were there, getting to see the sights. I mean, if you've never been to Spirit, it's like a little city. It's just an incredible place. And it's cool for our kids to be able to be there and be exposed to that. So we had juniors and seniors there and they worked in manufacturing and the Introduction to Engineering program. So again, our organizations like Spirit just really bend over backwards to help not just our kids, but all kids in the community, really, for these opportunities. And hopefully they can hire some of these kids here in the next few years. I know that's our goal. So Alex, thank you for everything you guys do. And, I mean, there's probably other opportunities we have, but these were some of our major community partners that we wanted to make sure we recognized tonight and just celebrate all the good, all the good help that they give our kids and our community. So if there's any questions, or that's all I had. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see ESOL, so we'll go to the next item.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Thompson, President Stan Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, and BOE members. My name is Katie Warren and I am the President of United Teachers of Wichita. Brent Lewis has stepped down to spend more time with his family and I'd like to just briefly thank him for his service on behalf of UTW. This is my 17th year in Wichita Public Schools. I started my career teaching first and second grade at Kelly Elementary, OK Elementary, and Kinsler Elementary. The last two years, I've been so blessed to work with Tammy Martin and the new teacher induction team, supporting our new teachers and helping them grow and make an impact on our students. So that's been a blessing. I also have worked with our TAP teachers at Wichita State. I teach K-2 literacy courses, so I really enjoy that as well. Most importantly, I'm a proud USD 259 mom. My son, Dane, he's a sophomore at Wichita Northwest High School and he's been a WPS student since pre-K. So he started at Kinsler and he's just the joy of my life and has had a wonderful education. I just want you to know that I look forward to continuing to build relationships with board members and the district leadership team. And that I know that those relationships are key in order to support our hard-working educators. I want you to also know that my door is always open and my phone will be on when you call. I'd like to now introduce Tracy Callard. She was going to share about an exciting partnership and collaborative effort to increase literacy rates among our third-grade students. Thank you, Tracy.
Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, Dr. Thompson and President Reeser and Board of Ed members and colleagues. Is this working? Can you guys hear me? Well, we're really excited. As you know, we want to work together, the teachers from United Teachers of Wichita, with the Board of Education and with the folks at AMAC in order to meet the district's strategic goals. So last spring, we wrote a grant and submitted it to the American Federation of Teachers for $20,000. And we got the grant, we received $20,000 worth of books for children who are not yet proficient at third-grade reading, but are third graders. So we got together with the wonderful Gil Alvarez, who's not here tonight. I run the homework hotline for the district and we came up with this idea to have master teachers, accomplished teachers, read with children via Teams at home, bedtime stories, where the children select the books and keep the books and they're reading in English and Spanish. So the teachers are modeling for the parents and they're trying to instill a love of books into the kids, which we know is very important. So we've gone through the data now that FastBridge is over the first window and we have found those kids that are the bubble kids. And we're matching them up with these teachers and the teachers will be reading with them starting next week at home. So we're really excited about that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else I need to tell you. Oh, the target schools are Ortiz, Cloud, Woodland, Irving, and Pleasant Valley Elementary. So we're really excited to do this. We're hoping it's going to make a difference and get those kids over the hump in reading. Anybody have questions about this, or yes?
We have two questions. Kathy?
This is a great idea. I want to make sure I understand it. Do the teachers go to the home?
No, we're going to be reading via Teams. So that way we can serve more children. So what the teachers are doing is they're pre-arranging with the parents. What's a good time for you, for your child, to meet me on Microsoft Teams? And the little siblings can also hear the story, and the parents. They can get together on the sofa and then the teacher will call the child on Teams at the given appointment time and the family can gather around and hear the story and the children can read to the teacher. And this is for fun. It's not going to be the decoding routine. It's going to be, and I know, Dr. Thompson, this is your, you love this. And we do too. And we really want to build, as teachers, it's very important to us that children love reading.
This is super. Thank you so much.
We're so excited. I mean, I teach gifted and talented, but let me tell you, I am more, don't tell my students, but I'm super excited about this because these are the children that really need us. So we're excited. And.
Ernestine.
Ernestine, you also have a question?
Ernestine, Ernestine, let's have you talk to them.
How many students are in this program right now?
Well, we're looking at everybody on FastBridge who is between the 20th and 40th percentiles. So we've already gone through the numbers at Irving, Cloud, and PVE. I think we're going to have about 80 children. But it's not, you know, it's not a terminal placement. Once those, you know, we'll look at it for this semester and then if those children are up and doing a good job based on the data, we will exit them and then we'll start bringing in some second graders and if other children have moved into the district. But really, by the time the state assessment rolls around, it's very important to us that these kids show what they know and go north feeder pattern.
So proud and so grateful. Thank you.
Hazel.
Yes, I just want to congratulate Katie for taking the position. It's really going to, you're going to be, do great in it. And I want to thank Brent for his hard work and what he's done for your union. And I know you'll carry on. Congratulations.
Patrick, next item.
Next item, Public Communications.
We do have three speakers tonight and I just would like to remind the speakers, you have three minutes. And up in the corner, we'll show you the time. And the timer goes off at with?
At three minutes.
At three minutes, okay, all right. Our first speaker is Pat Layman. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. About two weeks ago, some school board members questioned whether students at USD 259 might be wearing appropriate clothing. And I would say we don't know the circumstances all those children are living in. When I was a child, most of my clothes were made from flour sacks and feed sacks. I was blessed because my mother was an outstanding seamstress. So I was starched, ironed, scrubbed, and well-fed before I went to school. That wasn't the case for everyone in that school. Many of the kids came to school barefoot because they simply didn't have shoes. As the weather got cold, their parents would go usually to the company store and buy some shoes on credit. Our school board really focused on hiring the best teachers they could find. They made sure every child had a hefty, large lunch every day because for many of them, that was the only meal they would have that day. They made sure that those of us who lived in the rural areas had safe transportation to school. Otherwise, we could not have attended because I lived approximately 12 miles from school. My parents did not have a vehicle of any kind until I was almost 10 years old. Some may come to school, you know, the last count I had, we had about 600 kids in USD 259 who are homeless. Some come to school and they're wearing, you know, they're in shelters, some of them. Some of them are living with family members. Some of them are just simply sleeping wherever they can. And when I was involved heavily with the metro schools, and I think it's still going on, some are actually living in vehicles because that's the only place they have. So some of them may come to school wearing house shoes because that's the only shoes they have. Some of them may wear pajama pants. And I can't tell the difference between pajama pants and drawstring pants. They're sold at the finest stores in Wichita. Some will wear torn or ill-fitting schools clothes. Some may not be as clean as we wish they were because they don't have any opportunity or way to have clean clothes. A lot of them go home, even if they have a home, to empty houses because their parents are working two or three jobs, just trying to survive. Some may wear fur costumes. I think it's a way sometimes for some kids to step out of the reality of the life they may be living and some are just doing it for fun. I mean, we've gone through all kinds of phases, sagging bags, short shorts, you name it, we've been through it. Kids are always coming up with innovative ways to express themselves. I know some have suggested that USD 259 children start wearing uniforms. That might be nice, but it would eliminate a lot of kids from school because they just don't have the money to buy uniforms. It might be nice, but not necessarily necessary for an education. I think sometimes it's really hard for people who have lived in relative comfort for all of their lives to really understand the impact of abject poverty on these kids. You live in fear constantly. You are aware constantly that your life can be just torn apart. You're always on the edge. A lot of them, it just simply saps your energy. I don't think you understand the level that you're drawn down to or driven down to. You can't have the energy. You're hungry a lot of the time. And for a lot of kids, they just go to home every night praying that they'll not have to go hungry that night.
Thank you, Pat. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Leslie Page. Welcome, Leslie.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Leslie Page. Some of you have known me in my professional capacity. Many of you don't, and that's fine. I have some skin in this game because I've put three children through the Wichita Public Schools over time and I have an adopted grandson at East who is graduating this coming year. Okay, I would like to talk to you about the proposal for metal detectors. I'm a science nerd, so I always do a literature search and a data search. And this is one of the better of the 70 articles I read to prep to CU as far as a meta-analysis of what metal detectors do contribute to schools and what they don't contribute to schools. And so, since I am not having the information of what your root cause analysis showed of the gun and weapon incidences so far this school year, I don't even know if you did a root cause analysis, to be honest, but I would like to offer two alternatives very quickly. One is, if you think. but I would like to offer two alternatives, very quickly. One is, if you think you would like to take a plunge of $1.5 million into metal detectors, which at best, from the best data I could find, including the manufacturer's website, are 85%. That's slightly better than most US airports, by the way, which are only at 75%. But, then, I would suggest to you first, that you look at alternatives that are cheaper, and second, that you consider whether you'd like to do something like a pilot project. Put metal detectors at two high schools, pick them, north or east and northwest, divergent student populations, and see how that works for a year, before you take a $1.5 million plunge. The other alternative that I would like to suggest is one that my son came up with. Now, my youngest graduated from the IB program at East in 2000, went out, got two undergraduate degrees, joined AmeriCorps, and went to teach remedial math in the South Bronx in New York City. Most of his students were very close in age to him when he was in that classroom. They had a, they already had metal detectors. They'd had them since 2001, and they weren't very effective. And they still had students with knives and guns in the school, and it was a tough neighborhood. And he and his principal brainstormed, and what they did was to survey why these students were bringing these things to school. And it turned out that they had a significant homeless population, or a couch-surfing population, who weren't exactly homeless. I mean, some of them were living on the streets. And so, they got some cast-off bus station lockers when they were remodeling the bus station at LaGuardia, painted them in the school colors, explained what they were for, put them under an overhang on an outdoor sidewalk, and within 90 days, they had no weapons in the schools. And for the two years he taught at that particular school, they had no weapons. The metal detectors weren't that good, but giving the students a place to put their personal belongings, which traveled from place to place with them, because they didn't have a fixed home--
Thank you.
--gave them a solution.
Thank you, Leslie. And we do have your information that you gave us, so thank you. Our last speaker is Kevin Stoltz.
Thank you. Good evening, and to all, and thank you for having me. My name is Kevin Stoltz. I am the parent of an East High student, attending East junior year IB, and I'm a local business owner, and my first, well, my first 30 seconds now, but will be in recognition of Colonel Hester. Wow. You know, what a guy, teaching these kids lifelong values, and I wish he was still here, because I wanted to give him a standing ovation. So, good for Colonel Hester. So, first, and so I'm here to address security and really, maybe communication issues. The great, the screeners, this is great news for me. I personally believe securing the premise, the premises is the place to start, and I understand the capital investment is required, but it's time to get going. I would have thought we would have done it when a bullet came through the glass at East High last year, but we didn't. Here we are. Let's go. It's time. The not-so-good, and so, thank you, by the way. The not-so-good. Last Friday, what was that? You know, my email was lighting up, my phone was lighting up, my text was lighting up, everything was lighting up from 2:00 on, and my spidey senses started going up. Well, then, when I received the last communication from Dr. Thompson, I really, it didn't seem right. Something was not right, and it wasn't. And so, my spidey senses were, were correct, and, or at least justified. And, you know, Dr. Thompson's introduction was, "As, as you may be aware, or as you may all be aware, as you hopefully are aware, that's the problem." I wasn't aware. I wasn't aware that guns had been, you know, taken out of East High on campus that week. I wasn't aware that these other incidents had been occurring. So, the first time I was aware was when the news media and social media broke the story. And so, "Any WPS decision to withhold incident information from parents and/or declare an incident for internal use only lacks transparency and does nothing to foster parent and community involvement." This is not a bubble, you guys. "As an interested parent, learning of any incident involving firearms on campus through news media outlets and/or social media does nothing to promote trust," and, and again, it lacks transparency. You have a policy, board policy, P2351, revision, January of 20 states, among others, "For possession of firearms on school property, the notification to the building principal or designated does not relieve the duty to report such incident to the appropriate state or law enforcement agencies. An immediate report shall be made to the appropriate state or law enforcement agency. This same information needs to be reported to parents." I don't know how. I don't know about privacy. I think you kind of lose that when you bring a firearm to school, but, you know, I know that's another issue. But somehow, we need that data. I deserve that data. I, it's the only way I can gauge what's happening, where, and where my, where my boy is. So, yeah, you know, otherwise, we're just wholly and completely, you know, trusting, you know, my student in your hands, and I'd rather be participative of that data. If you find a firearm on campus, whether it caused damage, or whether it was going to cause damage--
Kevin, thank you.
--or not--
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under education, every student future-ready strategic plan.
I'll let the superintendent introduce the topic, while we get Terry set up here.
All right. So, the comments for the last two speakers, very timely. We have a presentation that we would like to share with the Board of Education. This presentation, I think we've done, probably, we enhanced this, because we do new things every year. She will, she will kind of talk about some of those things that we've done over the, at least since I've been in this job, about five or six years. We've enhanced security every year, and we come back to the board every year to share the enhancements and have conversations about the things that we're doing. And there's, will be lots of information here this evening that we will share. We'll answer any questions that you all may have following our report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Good evening, President Resor. Dr. Thompson, thank you for giving me your time this evening. I am Terry Moses, the Director of Safety and Environmental Services for Wichita Public Schools. In July, we had a short discussion at the bench about school safety, and so, we have put together a presentation for you that we are going to give you tonight. My staff knows that I could talk for days about school safety. And so, what we've tried to do is pare down and kind of hit the high points. So, if there's something I've missed, please be, feel free to ask, absolutely. Just like the good news that you saw tonight, there are so many things going on, it's impossible to cover everything. So, we're going to start with Uvalde. One of the things that we have talked about with all of our administrative staff, this report came out in July, July 17th, actually, and as soon as it came out, we provided it to all of our administrative staff, so they could learn. Unfortunately, we learned from tragedy. Yesterday was the anniversary of 9/11, and you look at nationwide, all the things that have changed in regards to safety and security. And after every, unfortunately, after every national event, we learn. After local events, we learn. We listen, and hopefully we improve. And we will listen to what we heard tonight, and hopefully, we will improve. But, one of the things that I garnered out of the Rob investigative report was this quote, "While no school could be, ever be built to prevent every conceivable threat." And that is true. We cannot, absolutely cannot build a bricks-and-mortar building. They can be built, and, most importantly, they can be operated in ways to better mitigate risk and impede potential threats from outside attackers. And that's really what we're about when we talk about school safety. If you've ever been to one of my presentations, one of the first things I do is I ask people in the audience, "What do you think makes a school safe?" And invariably, I get a variety of answers, and they fall down on two sides. And one is, we need metal detectors. We need locks. We need cameras. And then, the other side is, we need Dr. Hester, or Colonel Hester. We need SuperSAC. We need teachers like the ones that our people described here. We've got to have those relationships. And my answer to the question is, we will never be a successful school district regarding safety unless we have both. We absolutely have to have what you heard, all the way from SuperSAC through Good News. We have to have those relationships. We have to have those teachers. We have to have those people who put together that engaged, caring, connected community, so our feel, our kids feel connected. But, at the same time, we also have to have the bricks and mortar. So, just a real quick history lesson. When Dr. Thompson took over, many years ago now, it seems like, one of the first things she did was she went out and listened. Many of you were involved in that. We did listening sessions with the community, and we established, or I should say, you established as a board, four long-term goals, and I think you had great foresight in including safety as goal number four. I challenge you to look at any school district anywhere in the United States of America, and look at their long-term goals and see if anybody has safety in there. You do, because you listened. I went to a lot of those listening sessions, and we heard the ideas of safety. So, you made it a priority, and I think you're to be commended for doing that, making that a priority. About the same time that was happening, the state of Kansas also took action in regards to safety in schools, and they created the Safe in School Security Senate Bill 109, Section 76 standards, long-term. But, the bottom line is, they had a group of people get together, and they created a group of standards, safety standards for schools. These are not mandates. These are standards. There's a big difference. When we get to fire code, there's a fire code for just about everything. In regards to things like school shootings, there is not any set of mandates. It is recommendations. And as you already heard tonight, you're going to hear different opinions about different types of technology. There are no set real standards in regards to, or guidelines, or anything that's mandatory. These are standards. So, those standards, I'm just going to summarize them to you very, very, very shortly, starting at the top. And of course, they're written longer than this, if you have time to read them. Safeguarding the infrastructure, that's the bricks and mortar, the doors. Enhanced security technology, that's things like we're talking about tonight, as well as cameras, card readers for doors. Communication between district and first responders, we have an excellent system in Sedgwick County. I think our 911, Sedgwick County Wichita Police Department, we have an excellent communication system, and we're very fortunate for that. Emergency notification for individuals not on school grounds, something that we use Parent Link for, and obviously, we have always, in all of these areas, we have concerns about making sure we're doing our best. Our crisis plans, you approve those at the bench, the template for those. Annual training for staff and students, we're going to summarize some of that. And of course, crisis drills are, those are one things that are mandated by the state. The state Fire Marshal does mandate the type and number of drills that we do. And then, of course, they want us to consult with local officials and share plans as appropriate. And that's one of the key things, is sharing plans to people who need to have that information. So, when I talk about school safety, we talk about all types of crisis planning. A lot of things that we get hit on is, of course, response. What are you going to do? But, the bottom line is, if you aren't working in all these areas on this slide, if you aren't working in prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery, you're not dealing with all areas of crisis. You heard very eloquently, "I don't have to talk about prevention." From Good News all the way through SuperSAC, you heard about prevention. You heard about those activities that are involved in that. And then, we're going to kind of go through this entire wheel. Like I said, my staff tells me I could spend way too much time on this. But, we want to talk about it in terms of an all-hazards approach. And the example I give you there is exactly what's going on in regards to school shootings and fire code. After every school shooting, I can tell you, I get emails, I get letters, I get phone calls from people who have different ideas about how best they think we should lock down schools. And in most cases, those lockdown items that they provide violate fire code. In other words, people have to be able to get out of buildings when emergencies happen inside the building. And when we talk about an all-hazards approach, we can't go so far on dealing with one hazard that we actually create a bigger hazard when we're dealing with another situation. So, that's why people like me and you have to look at things and say, "Does this make sense in terms of an all-hazards approach, in terms of what technology we're using, what protocols we have, how do we handle situations?" So, we always want to look at things from an all-hazards approach. So, I'm just going to summarize some of our prevention measures. Again, I go through the things that we talked about earlier, all of those wonderful emotional building, positive things we heard about. We have school resource officers in eight of our high schools. We have a wonderful relationship with the Wichita Police Department and the Bel Air Police Department. The Wichita Police Department provides us with eight SROs in our high schools, and Bel Air provides us one for Northeast Magnet, which is actually operated out of Bel Air. We also, in the diagram you see there, one of the things that we hear a lot about, school resource officers on the negative side, and again, there's pros and cons we hear, is that this is a police, a school-to-prison pipeline. We've really worked hard over the years to reduce the number of arrests that we have in our schools by things like restorative practices, or the ways that we can solve problems, just like SuperSAC talked about, J. Ortiz talked about. How can we sit down and do problem-solving in a positive way? And that's also what our school resource officers do. So, they're looked at as counselors, mentors, law enforcement officers, and teachers and educators. They have multiple roles. We have security officers. We have 14 that patrol all of our schools, 44 that are school-based, and then, we have four at our admin centers, which are SSC and AMAC. When we talk about crisis plans, just to give you some information, we update those annually. They were approved by you earlier this year, and they're shared with key members of the building. We don't share them with everybody for obvious security reasons. We share that information with people who know what our crisis plans are. We do share them with local law enforcement as well. Training, these are just a few examples of what we do. One of the things that I think we did very well is we created the Run Hide Fight video. That's been viewed nationwide over a million times, and it's just to give people an idea of what to do should they encounter violent intruder situation. We have purchased with grant money AEDs. Every one of our buildings now have an AED. CPR training, we just did a quick little count of how many people we have trained in CPR. Every one of our buildings has somebody trained. Our elementary schools, we believe about three people, a minimum of three people in every school. And our high schools, many more, because the athletic staff are required to be trained, and our security officers are as well. Another partnership we have, Wesley Medical Center has worked with us, and they've trained over 5,000 of our staff in Stop the Bleed. This is just a great partnership where they have, and they come in and they talk to people about advanced blood control tactics. And we want to thank Wesley for their work. Threat assessment, just a couple of months ago, you approved our threat assessment process and updated that. Bullying prevention, we do an annual training and provide for all students and staff. I can tell you, that's a very difficult one, because it's ongoing and you do it once, but it's hard to determine when you need to do it again. Suicide awareness and prevention training, also mandate, that is one thing that is mandated by the state that we do. And we spend a good deal of time every year, making sure that we get the best information we can. We work with student support to get the information out to our staff. And then, the last one on the list here is nonviolent crisis intervention training, and that's that de-escalation skills. How do we take somebody that's in a pretty bad crisis situation in terms of behavior, and work through it without, hopefully, having to do anything in terms of use-of-force type situations. Other things that we have, and these are just, again, some highlights. We monitor unlike the activity, we receive alerts from software filters, anything that's done from a school computer, a search that is done by a student, an email that is sent by a student or a staff member, we receive alerts. And those alerts are sent to staff in my office, and then, we take those alerts, and if they, we do a real quick review of them. If it, it looks like it's something that we need to follow up there, we follow up with the student, or after hours, we will follow up with either 911 services, or attempt to contact the parent involved. Time-consuming process, but we think it is one that is very valuable to the district. Last year, in the two-- Last year, in the 2000, we had 36,000 alerts, and over 1,000 of those were followed up on, where we followed up to check the welfare of some student or staff member, based on what was done in a computer. Another program we have that we're, think is very important, and that's an anonymous reporting tool. Any research in regards to school safety will show you that kids are afraid sometimes, and they don't know who to go to. We always talk about see something, say something, and talking to a trusted adult. But we want to make sure we have an anonymous way for people to report as well. And we use the Speak Up program, and our partner on that is the Wichita Police Department, of course, and the Wichita Metro Area Crime Commission. I threw mitigation and protection together just because of time. The biggest example I have of mitigation is our storm shelters. A group of people before you decided on a bond issue, and that's the best example of mitigation. We can't control tornadoes in Kansas, but we have built our schools so that we can reduce human loss and injury simply through that bricks and mortar. So that's our best example of mitigation. In terms of crimes, we use what's called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Two of my staff are trained in that. They look at natural surveillance, reinforcement, things like fencing, what are we doing around our buildings to keep them safe, natural access control, limiting everybody to one point of entry once school starts, and things like target hardening. These tend to be law enforcement terms, but it's things that we need to do to make sure that our schools are safe. All of our schools are, have secured points of entry. They're all monitored by staff. When school starts in the morning, we have more than one point of entry, simply because we have large numbers of kids coming into schools. And at those points of entry, they are monitored by staff when those doors are open. Somebody has to physically open those doors. That's true elementary, all the way through high school. Once we get there, through that initial influx of students, and that first bell rings, then we go to a single point of entry. All of our buildings have secured single points of entry. You have to go past a staff member, either through a buzzer system where you're buzzed in, or you have to physically watch past a staff member. We are in the process of updating, and one of the things that we've talked about over the years, and we've done a lot of work to update our entries. Not all of our schools do you get buzzed in, and then you go into an office. And that's because our schools were built in a variety of architectural styles. And officers, offices 100 years ago weren't necessarily placed at the front door. Offices 50 years ago weren't necessarily placed at the front door. And now we're having to re-engineer and redesign, and come up with ways so that once you enter in the building, we want to force any visitor who comes into our building to the office. And so we're working on a three-year plan to make sure that all our buildings, once you enter a building, you are forced into the office. We have card readers, those around my neck. We've gotten rid of hard keys. Can you imagine you're on a playground, and you have a pit bull coming at you, and you're trying to figure out how to get into a lock? Not a good way to be. And so we've gone to card readers, a very quick way to access buildings. On every building, there are located throughout the building at key points of entry, and we continue to add those. We started this about four years ago, and we started with the bare minimum, and now we add card readers every year. And one of the things, if you read the Uvalde report, it was about propped-open doors. And so we go out and meet with staff, and we meet with principals, and say, what doors do you need access to? We want to make sure that you don't feel like you have to prop a door open, that we can get a card reader on that door, so you have access to get in. I've already talked very freely about fencing and playgrounds and athletic fields. All of our elementary schools are now fenced, again, thanks to you. We came to you several years ago and asked for funds to do that, and that's been very successful. And again, you read the Uvalde report, and that's something that they point out, is the need for that barrier and fencing. Cameras, we continue to add cameras. They're a great tool in regards to prevention, and they're also a great tool in regards to investigation. We have about 2,200, over 2,200 exterior cameras on our buildings. Another thing that we have is classroom door locks. All of our elementary classroom doors are lockable through a system called Teacher Lock. We added these several years ago. We are going to continue to add more of those. Right now, our middle and high school classroom doors may be secured in a variety of ways, not all of them with an interior lock. But we are working to get to that point. And again, a progress, work in progress, and we're going to talk a little bit about that a little bit later. Another thing that we added several years ago was a visitor management system, and it requires everybody that's in our building who's not an employee to be screened upon entry. That picture you see there is just a sample badge that we had. But if you're walking in our building, every adult you see in our building should either have this or that on them. So if you ever see anybody in our building that doesn't have one of those two, you can either approach them and say, who are you? Excuse me. Or you can contact administration and say, there's somebody in the building that doesn't have some appropriate form of identification on them. And we think that's very important in terms of having adults in our building around kids, is that kids know that these people with these belong in our buildings. Drills, this is mandated by state law. We have nine crisis drills every year. We have four fire, we have two tornado. One tornado drill is mandated to happen in September, and it happened today. At 10 o'clock this morning, we did our district-wide, our tornado drill. The drill reports that I received prior to about noon today, all very positive. Some of those, one said that they, a drill review was, they needed to have a more perky pace, in terms of getting to the tornado shelter, but we have a creative rider there. But the rest of them were generally very positive, in terms of kids know what to do, they know to stay calm. And I think that's one of the things that drills do. If you've ever heard me speak about drills, the purpose of drills is to build confidence. It's not to instill fear. We want people to feel confident that they know what to do in a crisis situation. And just the act of walking into a secure place, or even leaving in a fire drill, practice, we know how to handle it, we can walk out, we can handle that situation. So we have four fire, two tornado, and three all hazards. This list that we have here is kind of what we've come up with. I can tell you, the most common one we have is a neighborhood disturbance, and that's where we have police activity in the neighborhood, and the 911 calls us and tells us to do a lockout, so that we don't allow anybody into the building, because maybe police are working a disturbance in the neighborhood, or maybe they're chasing an individual in the neighborhood. We also do our annual back-to-school training, which includes information on our violent intruder response. That's provided to all of our staff every year. And we also do newsletters, and our first newsletter of the year always includes information about safety, and it has a link to our Run, Hide, Fight video. So all of our staff have two ways to receive information about the violent intruder response, through the training or the newsletter. In terms of response measures, one of the things that we did last year that we think has been very positive, we listened again. When we listened to people, they said, I don't necessarily know what to do in case of one of these kind of different responses, like a, what's a shelter in place? And so we worked with a company, and we created these crisis response brochures. There are flipbooks that are in every single classroom, and you can see the little guidelines there. Even a substitute teacher, something's happening, they could grab this, flip to the right page, and it'll give them enough information to get through the situation in regards to how they should handle the situation. I've covered this before, but in 2014, we created the Violent Intruder Response video. Like I said, it's been viewed nationwide. I even got a call from Germany from somebody who wanted to use it. We think it's just a good tool to get people basic information about how they should handle a violent intruder situation. Communication, again, I repeat myself, but we've got a great relationship with 911 and the police department. We use a national incident management system called NIMS, and then Incident Command System. After Uvalde, one of the things in the report you heard was that they did not have a clear line of who was in control. I can guarantee you, that won't happen here. We train with law enforcement. We work with 911, and we really focus on the fact there needs to be an incident command, and there needs to be an incident command structure. Excuse me. We also update our commuter communications protocols on a regular basis, so our dispatchers know to how to handle situations. Recovery, there are three main parts of recovery, reunification, and that is basically, we have, all of our schools have two places that they can go to in case of evacuation, should they need to. Our best plans are when we have a campus situation, like we had a fire at Franklin Elementary a couple of years ago, they evacuated to Allison, which is right next door, which is a perfect situation for us, because we have an auditorium where we can put kids. That's not always the case. We generally rely on churches or other large buildings in the neighborhood, the Y we use in a couple of places where we have places that we can go and safely house children, should we need to evacuate from our facility. We have plans for transportation dismissal, and even how to release the parents and guardians in those cases. Of course, after any situation like this, we want to do a mental health crisis team. We work with our student support people to go out and talk to folks, not just the day after, or the week after, but we always follow up even after that, because a lot of times you'll have some thoughts about, I'm not too sure about how things, you know, it's kind of bothering me. So we want to make sure and follow up with people. And as I said, we always want to debrief. We want to capture key lessons, we want to learn how we can do better. And if we don't sit down and take a critical look at how we respond and what we do, we are never going to get better. So we really have to debrief when we have these types of situations. Where we go from here, our work in progress, we look to the future, we're going to continue to exceed those Kansas State Department of School standards. We're going to continually research ways to improve, again, that all-hazard approach. Just an idea of what we've done in the past, the state of Kansas, when they recreated the Safe Schools Unit, they also offered money statewide for school safety. In 1819, we got 922,000. 1920, we got 921,000. They did not fund it in 2122, but we did, I mean, I'm sorry, in 1921, we did apply for a COPS grant, and we got 332,000. And then this year, the state of Kansas reallocated money for the Safe Schools grant, and we got 815,000. We've combined that with our capital money, and you can see the years listed there. In 18, we spent almost 1.5 million on safety. And then the remaining years, except for '22, because of that loss of some money that we had from the state, we've spent almost $2 million a year on general capital projects. And that includes things like the door locks, the cameras, the secured entries that we have been able to approve during that timeframe. With ESER funds, one of the things that we try to use is our ESER funds as well. We've added seven additional security officers. We've added a safety and environmental school specialist. That person really is focusing on the threat assessment process. And as I already indicated, you approved just a couple of months ago, a new threat assessment management system. So where do we go from here? We've got capital expenditures, we'll continue, and we're going to focus on three main areas. As I've already said, we've got a three-year plan for our secured entries. We also have a plan to improve those interior door locks, as we continue to work on that, and then improved additional technology. And one of those technology things that you're already aware of is the Open Gate screening system that I'll talk about shortly. We're going to continue our emphasis on violent intruder response for our training, stress the importance of following procedures regarding locking exterior doors, and then routinely checking the operability of all of our safety equipment for deficiencies and those kind of things. And I didn't write this here, but I go back to that same thing. We talk about that culture, that culture, that culture, that culture, that see something, say something, that developing that environment that we heard through our presentations at the beginning of this meeting tonight, that we have to have that culture where kids feel safe, engaged, involved, and a part of their learning environment. So for our technology, on your agenda tonight, you have the request for an automated screening of people for threat detection, and that is Open Gate. It's a weapons detection system designed for automatic screening of people. It is not just a metal detection system, it is a weapons detection system. And it is new. It is fairly new to the market in terms of the technology. We have been looking for some time, we have talked to a lot of people about metal detectors for years. We didn't feel they were appropriate for a variety of reasons. One is you're being rather evasive about going into people's property. It takes a long time to check a backpack, and just the delay that we would have. So we've been looking at alternatives, and this alternative was presented to us just a short time ago, as we were looking for things. And we found the Open Gate Weapons System. We have done our research, we've talked to a couple of other school districts that have used them. They have been happy with the systems to this point in time, and we would like to move forward with the Open Gate system as a weapons detection system, and that is on your consent agenda for this evening. I'll end by saying that Uvalde was a tragic, tragic, tragic reminder that the work we have done to secure and enhance the safety of our district is not complete. We will gain the information that we learned from the Robb Elementary School shooting, as well as other attacks, as well as things that are happening with our own district, to work to better mitigate risk and impede potential threats. And that's what we feel that our job is, to make sure that we exceed the standards, and that we do everything that we can to keep both our students and our staff safe in our buildings. I will stand for questions, or sit for questions.
Kathy?
Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I do have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You had said that there, right now, there's more than one entrance when the students come into school.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, when we install these devices...
Yes, ma'am.
Is there going to be just one entrance opened?
No, ma'am.
So are you going to be, is your idea to put these devices at every entrance?
We have asked our principals to give us the numbers that they need, based on their schools. Our schools that were built more recently, Southeast and Northeast Magnet, have many fewer points of entry, just because they were built in a time when we recognized we didn't need all those points of entry. East High has lots of points of entry. And so we will put more of these lanes, that picture that I showed you is a lane, we will put more lanes at different points in East High than we will our newer buildings. And those are basically doors that they have opened now, at the beginning of the school day.
And in your research, did you talk to anybody about gridlock?
Yes.
You know, like, and how long is it going to take the kids to get through this? Are they going to have to come to school earlier to get through this, and the contingency plans for that?
Basically, everybody said the same thing, that until they get used to it, you have a little gridlock.
Okay.
I know you go to Wichita State basketball games.
Yep.
And when they first implemented metal detectors, there was gridlock. And now, everybody's very familiar with the process, and there is no gridlock. And we anticipate the same thing here. We're going to work with Strategic Communications to get information out, but I don't think there's any way that we can say that those first couple of weeks, there's not going to be a little bit of getting used to a new process. And so, yes, there will be some. The people that we've talked to that have had them since the beginning of the year, say that once kids get used to them, they know what, for example, somebody had a metal water bottle that set it off. Just get a different kind of a water bottle.
Okay.
And then you're fine. So, yes, there will be a little gridlock, but we don't anticipate that it's going to maintain that way.
Okay, and I just have one more question, and then one more statement.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a three-year plan to get the remainder of our school buildings completed. What are we going to do in the meantime?
In the meantime, we do exactly what we do now. We have secured entries at all of our buildings. They just aren't, it's kind of a good, better, best. They are good. They are secured entries. You have to go past somebody to get in. We just want to get to best. Kind of like our storm shelters. When you and I went to school, we had a place to go in place for a tornado. That was good. Now we've built safe rooms. That's best. So we're a lot better than we were. The same thing with these. We're at good in regards to our secured entries. We want to move to best.
I think that it's very important for the community to know what we're doing. I appreciated the public comment with transparency. I think it is vital, and it's critical. I'm a parent who had two boys in our public schools, and I tried to put myself in the parent's positions last week, and I would be scared. I'd be scared with what has happened. And I do think that communication between our parents and the guardians of our students, something needs to change with that communication, like that parent said. I think this is a great idea. I think it's a step forward. I'm concerned with Wilbur, because Wilbur's got that one point of entry with the doorbell, but you can imagine, if you've been inside Wilbur, there's two hallways that you have to go by to get to the office. And so I'm wondering if some ideas of maybe having somebody sitting at the door, I mean, until that can be completed, we're going to have to think like we're not in a bubble. We've got to think outside of the bubble to be able to make this work for the safety of our students. And I think that that is critical right now, very critical. But thank you for a great presentation. I'm all for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Diane?
Thank you, Terry. I appreciate your presentation tonight. Can you quickly walk us through, so I think a lot of people have envisioned metal detectors, and we all have had that horrible experience getting, going through TSA, and we envisioned taking off belts and shoes, and taking laptops out of backpacks. Can you walk us through what this is going to look like for students on that first day when those arrive?
Yeah, I love their picture. This is what it's going to look like. It's going to look like a open-to-towered screener, single file people... It's going to look like a open-to-towered screener, single file people coming in. Not having to take their backpacks off, not having to take their keys out, not having to take their phone out. That's one of the reasons that we chose this product. Because if you do go to a ballgame or somewhere, that you have to take everything out, it slows down the process. It's really sort of evasive that people are looking through your things. As you can look at the top of those, you see the two towers, the green lights. We would ask students to simply come in, come in, come in, as long as that green light's coming in, come in, come in, come in, come in, come in. If we hit a red light, or if there's an audible sound, we can set it up either way. We would simply say, hey, step over here. And then just like we do now, when your metal detector goes off at a ballgame or anywhere else, except this is a weapons detector, we would have somebody do a secondary screen on you at that point. So it'd be, I was at Northwest on Friday night. I worked the metal detector screener, I scanned probably two hundred kids, they are very, very comfortable with the process. They go through them on a regular basis. They're aware, hey, I forgot, oops, got to back up, got to go over here and get rechecked. So I think it's very commonplace. This is a little bit different in that you don't have to take everything out. And we think it'll, yes, there's going to be a little backlog at first, just because you're going to have somebody go, whoop, stop. Whereas we really want them to just walk through, walk through, walk through, walk through, walk through. And we will have, for example, at East High, at our main entrances, we'll have two lanes side by side. So that you won't have to force everybody, a large number of people. Again, you go to a ballgame at any one of a major university and they've got multiple lanes at a door. So we'll have a minimum of two lanes at those primary points of entrance.
Okay, thank you. And these are, these are quick to set up, battery operated, as I understand?
Yes ma'am. You can see at the bottom, they have a little flip at the bottom. And they use basically a battery that you can buy at Loews, Home Depot. They also work off of 110 power if we want to do that. And then you can move them from place to place if necessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hazel?
Yes, I just, I want to, first of all, thank you for being proactive in taking care of the security. I think you're doing a great job and Dr. Thompson as well. I'm wondering about these, this.
Open Gate, there you go.
And who, who will be responsible for watching the students coming in and out? Would somebody be manning them all the time, is it an extra, somebody we have to hire to do this?
No, right now, as I, as I said, with our secured buildings, right now, our entrances are all staffed by somebody. No matter what entrance is opened at the beginning of the day, there is an employee of USD 259 at that entrance. So they're already watching students come in, now they will watch students come in through Open Gate.
Is there a special training they have to go through to do this as well?
Not really special, but yes, training. We'll walk through what they should do, as we have now, with, in terms of if something suspicious happens. We will work with the company on the training. It should be fairly brief, but yes, we want to make sure that people know how to handle the situation. If the, if the technology doesn't work for reason, something like that, who to report it to, those kind of things. So yes, we will provide training.
Okay, I have a couple of questions.
I'm ready.
The other one is on training, and you were talking about training the, for run, hide, fight.
Yes ma'am.
And the crisis plan, who, who do you train? Do you train the building supervisors and then they train their staff?
What we do is we provide a PowerPoint. My staff creates a PowerPoint at the beginning of every year. And then we provide that PowerPoint to the principals. And then the principals provide that training to their staff as a part of Teacher Report Week.
Okay, one more question. You talked about exterior cameras.
Yes ma'am.
And are they, do they run 24 hours?
Yes ma'am.
And where does, where does that data go to?
That data is kept on servers for a short period of time. Almost every security company, whether it be your local gas station, your local grocery store, has cameras. And the standard is basically to keep that for about thirty days and then it tapes over itself. So that it's kept on a server for about thirty days. Our standard is no longer than thirty days, really. We figure if we don't, if we haven't had a concern about an incident, within thirty days, there's no reason for us to keep it longer than that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Julie?
Thank you, Ms. Moses, excellent presentation. I want to commend you and your staff for the great job that you have done since you've been with the district. I do believe that you've continually been proactive. And I can remember working in the district, this question about the Incident Command. I think fifteen years ago, we were doing exercises and trainings regarding that. So, that incident that happened at Uvalde, that was noted as one of the largest concerns, we've had that nipped in the bud for years. What my question is tonight is, I think I understood, when you were talking about the various high schools, that at each high school, every point where kids arrive to the school in the morning, at every single one of those points of entry, these will be placed, is that correct?
I wouldn't, I would digress a little bit, and JORTC would be an example. If you have a specific small group of students that are coming in at 5:30 in the morning, they may not, but we will ask them to go back through the building. That's one of the protocols that we have to work on. Because you do have those small groups of students that come in here and there that are directly meeting with somebody. But as in terms of the beginning of the school day, when the masses show up, they will go through a point of entry with one of these screeners.
And at the bus entry, they'll also be set up?
Yes ma'am.
And then, once the school day starts, you have kids that are tardy, what happens in those situations?
Those students all have to come through the office. And if the, again, if the screener allows it to go straight into an office, then we'll leave it where it is. If we need to put one in the office, we'll put one in the office.
Okay, awesome. So, and then, we're going to start with high schools, with our consent item tonight. But then, if, if these prove to be effective, as funds are available, we'll move to other locations, is that correct?
We always look for better ways to secure everything. So if, if technology changes, maybe there would be something better, that we could move something somewhere else. So I wouldn't say a hundred percent sure, but certainly, if we have positive results out of this, we would look at expanding it.
Okay, thank, thank you. And again, I just want to thank you for the great job you and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
This prepared, I mean, this request that we have for the funds tonight. How many of those, how many schools would that equip?
All of our high schools.
All of the high schools?
Yes ma'am.
In all of the entrances that all of the high schools have?
Not all of the entrances, all of the entrances that are used.
Well, that, that's what I.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for correcting, but all the entrances that are used?
Yes, East High has a lot of doors.
Right.
But we only use about a dozen of them, but yes, all the entrances that are used.
Right, and that's, and so, if we approve this tonight, we would cover basically every place that a kid comes from the outside in, or any person, not just children. And presumably, any adult going into a school will go through one of these.
Not staff, we don't feel that that's necessary to run staff, because they generally come in a different door, but certainly any visitors.
And I'm puzzled, you keep calling this not a metal detector, but a weapons detector.
That's correct.
Can you tell us more about how it knows the difference between my laptop and a gun?
It doesn't necessarily know the difference between your laptop and a gun, what it picks out is something that is metal, dense, and in a circle.
Thank you very much, okay.
Thank you, yeah, go ahead. I had a question and, but. When an incident happens at our school, approximately, how much time do we have to inform the parents?
There's two different things, and that's one of the things that we get a lot of feedback on. When something happens and we need to take action, we take action quickly and we don't inform parents. We will go on the intercom and we will tell everybody to lock down, lock out, evacuate, whatever. Then, we go through the situation and I tell people the need for that is speed. Then we want to get information in regards to the situation, but we want to be accurate when we send the information out. And Uvalde is a prime example of that. There was so much misinformation going out as that happened.
I know that's a criticism in the past, is that parents appreciated getting notified, but it was the wrong information.
Yes, and we've struggled with that on a lot of incidences, in terms of quick versus accurate. On the post-side, general consensus within people who do my work for a living, as well as law enforcement, even the FBI, I've gone to the national, the FBI's communication is to get it right. And that means that it may take a little bit more time to get it right.
And that's, and I apologize, I knew the answer to my question. Once an incident is either broadcast over an intercom or 911 is called, we have thirty seconds before it is in the news or on social media.
Yes ma'am.
We have thirty seconds. So, yes, unfortunately, you are probably not going to be the first person notified. And the reason why that is, is because we are going to notify the police department first. That is our first priority. And as soon as we have all the information, and that's why one of the speaker's phone went off so many times, once we have the complete information, we will be transparent at all times, on all the information, on all the facts. But are we going to get to you first? No. And it's because with today's environment, the minute there is a information out there that there is a problem, we've, we've literally timed it, and I think the superintendent can back me up on this, we have thirty seconds before the, before the public starts finding out about it. And there's some good in that, too. I'm not criticizing that, I'm just saying that. I also want to make sure the public understands that our safety efforts did not start with this Texas tragedy. It did not start with the Sandy Hook tragedy. It did not start with the incidences we had in our schools last week. Nor, once the scanners, if we approve the scanners tonight, nor will our efforts end once we have these lanes with the scanners. This effort for school safety was before this Board of Education. And I guarantee you, the way this school district looks at school safety, it will continue long after everyone forgets our names. So this is a continuous effort that started before tonight and will not end after tonight. And after, and with saying that, I'd like to move that we take up Consent Item Bid 1, 3 Automatic Screening Device Unit.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor to move the agenda around just a bit, yes.
I will wait until you all have, they're videotaping. I will wait until you all have made your, your vote.
So we are moving, this motion is to move the automatic screening detention units up to a vote at this moment before anything else is done. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Quick, who's, who?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we can use our thing.
Yeah, and who seconded the motion?
Julie. Yes, I'm sorry, before you vote, sorry. Well, this discussion is whether or not we are actually going to move this item.
Oh, okay.
So I.
So we're not voting on the item right now?
Not yet.
We're just voting on whether to move the agenda item.
Okay. No, we, we will definitely discuss this item. Motion carries 7-0, we will now take up, on the consent agenda, Purchasing Consent Number 3 Automatic Screening Detection Units. Is there any questions from the board on these units? I, we kind of touched on the presentation, I just felt like that's, it would make sense to go straight to this discussion. Kathy?
Terry, how long will it take to have these installed in our schools? And how much advance notice will our students receive?
I'm not going to answer the first question. I have been a victim of the supply chain. And so it's impossible to make any, I, it just can't, the way it is. We will work with the vendor, we will work with Strategic Communications to get out information just as soon as we can. We will work with our local media to get out information just as soon as we can, when these devices are close to getting here.
How long will it take for the students to know? I mean, are we going to let them know?
Are we going to let them know, like, in three weeks, this is going to be a new procedure?
We're letting them know now.
Oh, okay, okay.
By this vote, this is a public vote. So I would say that a vast majority of our staff certainly know this. We will work with Strategic Communications in regards to our students. I think we've got time to set up a communication plan. In terms of letting them know what day they show up, it really depends on what the delivery date is.
I want to just take a moment, Mr. President, to thank Dr. Thompson and to thank you for your tenacity to act so quickly on this. Again, I cannot emphasize how important I think that this is for our community, for our students, for their parents. Because no child wants to go to school afraid and no parent wants to let their child go to school if they're afraid. So, this is good, I'm totally supportive of this, thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Diane?
I have maybe an outlier question that's not necessarily in regard to the vote, so I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but. You know, there's going to be more incidents, maybe, because there's a record of it. What's that communication with the parents that's been brought up this evening? When there's incidents that are detected, not a false alarm, not a nuisance alert, but when there's an actual incident detected at a school, are parents going to be notified? When would they be notified? Can you walk us through that protocol?
Right now, the protocol is that we notify when there is, first of all, imminent danger, after it's been resolved to send out information. It's a very difficult line. If you read the Uvalde report, one of the criticisms of Uvalde is that they send out too many alerts and they're developed a culture of complacency. When I talk to the media, I liken it to the weather. If you tell everybody too much to watch for weather, then nobody's going to ever watch for weather. So we try to notify parents when we feel like there is a true safety concern. It's very, very difficult. And we really work with our principals and our staff to talk to them about, hey, was this resolved quickly, it didn't involve any other students, it was taken care of? Or is this something that other people need to know about? I can tell you that we debrief after these entrance incidences and we do talk about it. And certainly, every time we get feedback from you and feedback from our public, we're going to talk about it as well. There is no automatic, generally in the elementary, if we ever, well, if we ever evacuate students, we always let parents know, of course, because they're going to a different site. But we do not let parents know every time we go on a lockdown, because there's a police activity in the neighborhood. A lot of those times, those lockdowns last two to three minutes. Where we'll get a call from the police saying, hey, they've got a police chase in the neighborhood and then within a minute, they have the person in custody. So we do not send out alerts on all of those kind of things. It's a difficult, difficult question to answer.
And can parents select how their, how their communication is? Like, I know we get, I get an email, a text message, and a phone call when alerts go out. But I don't know if, do parents receive all of those all at the same time? Or do they select, I want a text message, or I want a phone call?
Parent Link is the way you enroll and you get that information, through what the information you receive, we give you. For example, we did the tornado drill today.
Right.
And everybody within the district who had selected to receive an information, received it. I had somebody come up to me and say they didn't receive it. And I asked them, what phone number do you have in the system? They said, I have my home phone number. Well, you're not going to receive it at work if you have your home phone number listed in the system.
So parents need to know to go to Parent Link?
To go to enrollment and make sure that they, and then update it. The other complaint we receive a lot is, I changed my phone number, will you have to go and let us know that you changed your phone number?
Okay.
So absolutely imperative that if you ever have an address change, phone change, anything like that, that we are notified.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ernestine? Oh, okay.
Want to pick up on the question here. Let's assume that some stu-
Let's assume that some student is careless and decides to leave a gun in their backpack, and they go through our, what do we call them, lanes?
Open gate.
Got it.
Okay.
They're going through there, and it sets it off. And so then the student is pulled aside, and probably not right there in front of everybody is their backpack searched, but probably the student is taken over to the side, so it's not a public event of undressing or something. And supposing that it really is a gun that's in that backpack, who and what gets notified at that point? Presumably, that student's parent would be notified. Would all of the other parents in that school be notified? Would all the teachers in the school be notified? Would all the students in the school be notified?
We haven't yet established our protocols yet. This is new technology. And one of the things that we're going to do if this item gets approved tonight is to work through those type of protocols.
And then we'll communicate with you so that you know what, everybody to know, so that they know what it is.
Well, I thought about the suggestion a little while ago. Have we thought about a pilot project? It seemed to me like that that might be, I don't know, Eastside's got all of them.
There's a lot of best practices out there, and people who have used the system before. So of course, those will be our first line of figuring out and then creating something that works for Wichita.
Okay.
Hazel?
Are the devices mobile?
Yes, ma'am.
So you can move them around, and they're easy to?
Yes, ma'am.
Move around, okay. This is a question that I've been asked several times. What are the consequences of students who are in possession of a weapon?
That depends on a great deal of factors, from status of special education to regular education, manifestation of their behavior. The most severe punishment from a school would be expulsion for a year. But again, that is not an automatic, it depends on a lot of things.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. I think just in speaking in favor of the vote, I do want to make clear, though, that if anyone is out there looking for the golden horseshoe that solves school safety issues, while we are going to, hopefully, after this vote, put one more piece in our arsenal to combat any threats to school safety, this is still, like, go back, matter of fact, go ahead and put your first slide back up there if you could. I mean, this is definitely not the ultimate answer either. But it's something that I feel like it's worth the investment to give us one more piece of equipment to respond to those things. All, any other discussion about the motion to pass? Oh, do we even have? Yes.
I will make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the purchase of the automatic screening detection units for a million and a half.
I second that.
Moved by Julie and seconded by Kathy, discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. Motion carries 7-0, and I appreciate the board's willingness to take that up. It just seemed timely to do it at that point. Dr. Thompson?
I just want to take the time right now to thank staff, students, and our community for the feedback that was given. If you remember the email that I sent out, the communication that I sent out, I asked folks to please send feedback to info@usd259.net. We received quite a few, quite a few items to review, and that helped shape. We are not done yet, right? So we heard your feedback. I hear you. And we will continue to work to improve our processes so that we ensure that people believe that we are transparent, because we really are, it's just a lot. But I know that we have to do better, because you entrust us with your children, and we need to ensure to you that we're doing everything that we can to keep them safe. And to our staff members who gave us feedback, thank you, because our job is not just for kids, it's for you, too, right? That's a heavy burden for us to have, you know, almost 50,000 students and over 9,000 employees that we have to keep safe every single day when they walk through our doors. And I will tell you, it is a heavy burden. You're talking about a person not sleeping at nights, that was me and my team, because we wanted to make sure that we were doing right by you. So please continue to provide feedback, because we do listen, and we do, what's that word you always tell me to do?
Debrief.
Debrief. We debrief all the time about our processes and try to improve them every single day. So thank you very much to our community, our media for helping us, our community leaders for helping us to be able to work through these issues so that we can ensure that all of our students are safe, and that they can dream and to believe and achieve. So thank you for being able to make those comments.
Ernestine?
And I wanted you to understand that I heard what you were saying is a suggestion. We aren't finished with solving all of our problems. This is a beginning, and maybe we'll have to end up buying some bus lockers after all. But thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. And thank you, thank you for coming and sharing with us.
If it's okay with the board, we'll take an eight-minute break and come back at 8:25 and resume the agenda. Any problems with that?
As if you can't tell time. Eight minutes is up.
Oh. Okay. The Wichita Board of Education meeting is reconvening. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Every Student Future Ready Strategic Plan, Increase College Certifications and Credits.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am really excited about this particular item that we're bringing to you this evening. This is our strategic plan goal number three, which is to ensure that we are increasing our college certifications and credentials. And so I am really very excited about this work. We have really moved some mountains over the last year or so, and I'm just excited to be able to toot our horn, as Ms. Ernestine Crable tells us. Would you tell me, who doesn't tooteth their own horn? What'd you say?
She who toots not her own horn, get her own horn, not tooteth.
Yes, that right there. And so we are going to toot our horns some, and then share some information with you, and then open up for questions that you may have.
All right.
I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you. And I'm flying solo tonight. Gil got sick today, and so he was supposed to be here to team me up, but hopefully, I can do all right by myself. So I'm Kelly Beilefeldt, I'm the Executive Director of Culture Career Readiness, and excited to be here with you talking about strategic goal plan number three. You have two pieces of information in your packet just to kind of explain. You have the slides that'll be displayed. And then the other piece of, the other packet is the data. So instead of putting all the data on the slides, you probably couldn't see very well anyway, you have it in paper format in front of you. So I'll walk you through that, but as I reference that, that's what you guys have, so. The strategic plan is based on four wildly important goals, and tonight, you're hearing about them a little bit out of order. Terry was number four, and I'm number three. But we are focusing on essentially getting kids ready for their post-secondary success by increasing certifications and college credit along with all of our four market value assets that you've heard us talk about before. So last September, when Gil and I came to the board meeting, we rolled this out as kind of a new plan. We revealed to you what we call the gears, that page. And now, a year later, we have some updates for you on where we stand. We have some updated data and some progress that we'd like to share. So this is all about our graduates. We have more than 200,000 graduates that have shaped Wichita's legacy since we opened our doors 151 years ago. We are annually the single largest source of workforce in the community. And one of our goals is, and one of the big picture goals for this is to retain talent and keep them local so that we can build our own workforce here in Cedric County. So specifically on goal number three, our goal is by 2025, 70% of seniors will graduate with a diploma and one or more market value assets. Under that, we have three indicators of success. One of those is tracking the market value assets, and that's the data we're going to break down tonight. Within that, and among that, and through that are our CTE pathways. So the route to get a number of these market value assets is through a CTE pathway. So part of that is woven through what we do. And then finally, increasing the number of students completing an individualized plan of study to prepare for their post-secondary success. So like I mentioned earlier, these are the graduation plus gears. In the middle of our gear is always the plan, the student's plan. We use a software called Zello, and that student starts in seventh grade creating that plan. From that plan, the small gears that are kind of blue on the screen, those are kind of universal. Every school has those, and every student is eligible to get those. So we have school-wide Avid, we have all of our juniors take the ACT test. We try to get every senior to complete FAFSA. We have scholarship opportunities. We have CTE pathways in every high school. And we want to, you know, starting in elementary, we try to work with employability skills. So those are, the reason they're smaller is they're kind of open to everybody. The green gears, then, are the market value assets. These are the things that a student has to go above and beyond in order to accomplish or to earn, and that's the 70% number. You might wonder about 70%. A lot of times in education, our goal's 100%. 70% is based on the state of Kansas research that comes out of Topeka from KSDE. And their research in 2014 came from a Georgetown research study that said about a third of our students in Kansas are going to have jobs in Kansas that require a bachelor's degree. About a third of those students need a technical certificate, and about a third of those students can go straight into the workforce. So that's why our goal is 70%, because we know that in order for us to meet the demands of the Kansas workforce, 70% of our kids need to go to either college or technical school and get a credential. And knowing that 30% of our students can use that high school diploma and go straight to the workforce. So that's why that goal is what it is. I'm going to go deeper dive into the, basically, tonight's presentation is about each of the four market value assets. So without further ado, we'll get into there. The data was, we did not have good mechanisms in place to track this data a year ago when I sat here, and that was really our goal in 2122, was to create data collection systems for these processes. So last year's graduates, May of '22, they are baseline data. We are continuing to refine this because this is complicated, and I'll get into some of those complications weeds a little bit more as we continue on. But really, what you need to know is we're trying to focus on tracking these MVAs, these market value assets, so that students can know how to achieve post-secondary success. That's really what this is all about, that's the big picture. So for, in the short term, yeah, go ahead. Market value asset.
Okay.
So that's the plus of graduation plus, the diploma plus one of those assets. So our goal just for this year, for the class of 23, is 25%. You can see what we've created in Power BI, and that's the system we use to collect all of our data and track it. I call it the speedometers, but our speedometer for the senior class last year shows that we were at 16.53%. So of last year's graduates, about 17% of them had one MVA. We had a number of students that had more than one, but discrete students, they had one. So that's our starting point for tracking this data. So the big gear in the middle is our individualized plan of study. We use Zello to engage students starting in seventh grade. We use Zello to begin building resumes, interest inventories, career research, university research, et cetera. And our goal with IPS is 100% of seniors that we want to have that in place. Last year, we were at 90.1. So we do those, implement that through advocacy classes and through lessons that are directed through our office. So we always wanted to come back to the plan. That's what we, you'll hear me say that a lot, we always wanted to come back to the student's plan. So let's dive into the four market value assets. The first one is industry-recognized credentials. So the photo you see here is a student with his ASE certification he earned from South High School. If you take your car to a mechanic, that mechanic has ASE certification. So this student is, who graduated last year, is work-ready. We had four students that graduated with that certification, which is not easy to get. It's a tough credential and takes a lot of hours. On the right-hand side, you see students that are preparing food at South High in the culinary classroom. That's some sort of rainbow pasta. Those students would have had a food handler's card in order to get into the class. And a number of our students also take ProStar and SurfSafe Manager class in order to know how to run a restaurant. So those are some examples of credentials that we offer. So the impact of credentials, we have two, kind of two different tiers of them. The state recognizes a certain area of credential, like ASE certification. So there's KSDE-recognized credentials, and then there's some that locally we also use and track. So an example of that is automotive technician credential called Ford ACES. Mel Hamilton Ford is one of our strong business partners, and this is a credential that's, it's not easier than ASE, but it's like a micro-credential. So we do brakes, and we do tires, and we do ignition systems and batteries. And so we're able to use that in a different way, because not every kid is able to achieve the ASE certification. So we have the big statewide ones, and then we have some regional ones that we also use and track. And as we like to say in our office, credentials tell the story of a student's experience. So not all credentials are created equal. A food handler's card, a first aid, is way different than a CNA or a welding certificate. Those are very different. But for some of our students, a food handler's card is the route they need in order to become post-secondary successful. Or it's the entry they need to get to the step that they want to get. So those credentials, we track them all, but some of them are end-of-the-pathway credentials, and some are, you know, the student would get at the beginning. So there's some nuance to it. This is our big picture. You can see that we didn't track this very well, starting in 1819, because we've done these credentials for a number of years. So we put some systems in place the year before I got here in 1920. We had the COVID dip, so we weren't able to do a number of these, and you can't get a welding credential online in remote learning. We don't want that, we don't think that's good for anyone, so. And then you can see we bounced back pretty strong this year, especially as we're starting to emphasize it. So I did a screenshot snip there, but you have the data in your packet. The bar charts, I know it isn't interactive for you, so you can't tell what the bar charts mean, but each of those is a different credential. It's the same color from year to year, though, so you can kind of track how many have been earned over time. And then the next page is the deep dive of those. These are all the KSDE credentials, so we started with these this year, the KSDE-recognized ones. And you can see a number of new ones that we haven't been offering. We did this as a pilot, as the lady mentioned earlier. So Adobe Illustrator, Adobe Photoshop, we started that in one classroom last year. Now we're going to offer that in seven high schools for this school year, because those are, Photoshop credential is a great credential regardless of the field you're going to go into. Same with Microsoft Office, Excel, PowerPoint. Some of those are kind of just universal skills that are great for kids. So you can see our progress there. I do think that this, I didn't notice it until after Gil and I reviewed it all, but I'm not sure this screenshot snapped all of what we wanted on there. So at any point, if you have any more questions about any of these specifically, we don't want to be here all night, but we could really dig into some details about each of these if we wanted to, so. That's industry-recognized credentials. Next up is work-based learning. And the photo here is a auto technician student from Wichita, last year was a senior. last year was a senior, working at our service center, doing an internship. So he did an internship within the district in a work-based learning format. So last year, we had fifteen of those last spring in district internships, and now this fall, as we continue to expand that, we have twenty-four. Some are in district, some are out of district. So we, we know that that's a valuable skill for kids. But we also know that you don't necessarily have to go, we offer twenty-seven pathways. So in a lot of our pathways, you don't have to leave the school to get that experience. I'm not sure any of you guys realized it, but they've left, but we had all three news stations here, but there were four cameras. The fourth camera was Southeast High School's Journalism Group. That kid spent two hours here tonight doing a work-based learning opportunity, and now he's going to create a news story for his school tomorrow, right? The, the young lady that was talking about mock trial in youth court, you don't have to leave the school to get those experiences. Those are our application-level CTE courses that we do within the school. We do teaching internships. We do early childhood internships. We do culinary simulations with catering events. So we do a lot of these work-based learning opportunities in the school. You don't have to leave and go do an internship for everyone. The internships are for things that we don't, we, we can't replicate. A vet, a dentist, you know, we don't have those pathways. So those are some things that we do outside of that. So when you look at this data, you could say, whoa, you know, that's a lot of internships. Well, those aren't mostly internships. Most of those are enrollment in our application-level CTE classes. So you have the full list on, the full breakdown of the, all those courses, and then you also have a breakdown of which high schools, how many come from each high school, too. So our, our CTE pathways don't necessarily a hundred percent correlate with the enrollment of the high schools. Some are bigger and some are smaller and that sort of thing. So, so that's work-based learning. The college credit is number three. So in the picture here, you will see signing day at WSU Tech. So this is technical school credit. Shoot, I keep clicking ahead, I'm sorry about that. Quit touching the mouse. So we do that. We also do the early, early college academy at Northwest. That's dual credit. So we have some students that go to Friends University and learn from a college professor and get credits that way. And then we have, you see there a chart that's from North High School. That's concurrent credit. So those are classes that our faculty teach, WSU, or WPS staff teach, and then it's articulated through the college. So our students are able to pay for college algebra, public speaking, those sorts of things. And if you see, you know, just glancing at that list, you can see that's just a portion of, of what we offer at North High School. So this is part of where it gets tricky with the data and the numbers, because we work with K-BOR and trying to get some of this data when students enroll in these classes. We work with numerous colleges, so we're always trying to work with them to get this. So putting our arms around this data has been a little bit more challenging. I think we have some better processes for this year, so we can tell you exactly how many kids are taking college algebra for college credit. We don't really have that from last year. But we do have good data. So we do have, like I said, there's multiple ways students can earn credit while in high school. Last year, we had two hundred and ten students earn technical level credit. So that's through the Excel and CTE program. That's a state-funded program that offers free tuition in high-demand areas. So those, all those students went to, went to college for free essentially through WSU Tech, Flint Hills, or Hutch, depending on which course it was. Then we also had concurrent credits and dual credits through our teachers and through ECA, and we had a total of nine hundred and sixty-six students receive those credits. So now, this data is all students, so that's juniors and seniors. So, you know, and then, and then some, some kids are in multiple pots when we're counting them. So it gets a little bit complicated when we're coming down to it, but when we talk about the MVAs, that speedometer at the beginning, that's discrete students who earned one. So that might be they earned four credentials, but that's just one, and they earned college credit, but that's just one. So the numbers get a little wonky, or complicated, I guess, not wonky, but it's been a process kind of keeping track of it all. So here's our partners who we work with for these college credits. WSU, WSU Tech, Friends, Newman, Hutch, and Flint Hills. We have great relationships with all six of them, and they work with our office readily to, to have these experiences for our kids. These are some of the general education courses that we offer, that you see in, not every high school offers every one, because it takes certain credentials for teachers to, be able to teach these, but that's another ongoing process that we have done in targeting teachers to get assistance with those credentials. And as of tonight, or this week, we now have a new URL that is usd259.org/collagecredit. This takes you to the website that has all of our high schools listed. You click on the high school, and here on the left-hand side, concurrent credit information by school, it has all of them listed, and then you click on, you know, Heights, for example. So any parent can access this and see, you know, what are the opportunities for my student that's a sophomore, or a junior, or senior, as we're going through enrollment. You know, I, we all know you pay, you know, pennies on the dollar for these compared to what you pay once you're enrolled as a full-time freshman. So these are great opportunities, even though they're paid tuition. And you can see we have on the right-hand column there, or the second to the right-hand column, the cost for those tuition courses. So that information's all there. In your packet, then you have some breakdowns on students per high school and how many sections. The first page is the concurrent and dual, so that's WSU, WSU Tech, Newman, and Friends, and those college professor classes. The next page is the technical level classes, the Excel, Excel and CTE classes. So that's college credit. And then lastly, last but not least, is entrepreneurial experiences. The other three, we have rocking and rolling, we've got the data figured out. This one, we're still trying to put a, a good finger on what exactly we want to track for this. So you have an example here. This is North High last year during Market Day. If you've ever experienced a Market Day, it's a great entrepreneurial experience where kids, through part of our Young Entrepreneurs class, sell an item and try to make money, right? It's capitalism one-on-one, right? And they figure out what sells and how to market, and price points and all of that fun stuff. And then up in the top right corner, you see the coffee shop at East High. We have plans to open a new one of those at Heights. We have Star Buffs that just opened in Southeast, yeah, which is an awesome name, isn't it? And so these are great entrepreneurial experiences for kids that they get hands-on learning with how to, how to manage a business. So what we're counting currently are those school-based experiences, such as Market Day, Young Entrepreneurs class, or working in the, in the coffee shop, or the t-shirt stand, or whatever the class does. That last bullet point there, we would like to figure out a way to honor kids' work with self-directed projects. We have kids that are making money, which is super cool, and it would be neat to harness that and celebrate it, but at the same time, if they are, you know, if they want to cut hair, they want to mow lawns, they want to create a bakery, we can also help them with, you know, regulations and taxes and, you know, our classes do that for kids. So we have kids that are going and out and making money, and it'd be great to figure out a way to mesh that in with the learning experiences we have for kids. So one example of that is, I didn't have the, the video here, but this is just a screenshot of Dr. Thompson's interview with Varun last year, who started his own business. This was an esports article, but he shared about how he started his own business and sold it. And he's, yeah, yeah. So he's, he's definitely one of our success stories. But so in summary on this one, we're, we're working on, in our office on finding a process to, to find a route to recognize students for these self-directed efforts. We have started working with Student Startup, which is a nonprofit, a local nonprofit that helps kids, helps give kids capital if they need it, but gives them classes and training in order to, you know, we connected with them through, through the Senior Career Fair, and we're going to start trying to bridge that gap with them. And then I already mentioned the interview with Varun. So that's my data. And then the last thing, of course, was my good news from last time, Pathways to Success. So next Tuesday, we hope to see a whole bunch of parents and kids there to see all of these opportunities. So we'll have all of our pathways highlighted, but we'll also have highlighted ECA, and IB, and college credit, and WSU Tech, and really all of these things that I talked about tonight. It's all about getting the kid not only across the stage, but having a plan for what they can do after that, and helping them be successful in that plan. So that's a whole bunch of stuff. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Dr. Thompson, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
And I think it's very important that that September twentieth date still keeps getting broadcast. It's kind of like we, when we have the Magnet School Fair, parents many times ask me what type of CTE programs do we have, what kind of the pathways do we have? And it's nice now to just say, you can go to this fair and get all the information, and students can get information about all the different pathways, and it's, I'm glad that we came up with that idea. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and you know, the uniqueness of it is it's all high school, so it's, it's just focused on high school.
Right.
So there's really not, I mean, the showcasing opportunities for the magnets is really about a family who wants a magnet option, every kid who's going to high school should be coming to this, right? Because every kid should have a plan and should have something they want to do post-secondary.
For to market.
Exactly.
Kelly, this is great. I'm grateful that your creativity is bringing this to our students. You mentioned that you're trying to figure out a way how to recognize these students, and why not just have an event, have an evening that invites the student and their parents or families, and make it a big deal, because then other kids will see that, and they might want to become part of this. And it, and it could be an inspiration for their students, but I mean, I would, I would definitely think about doing something like that, and if you have to do it twice a year instead of just once a year, that's an option for you, but everyone loves recognition.
Yes.
Even us old people, so.
Thank you.
Hazel?
I just want to say that when I was first visiting schools, I was so impressed. I went to North High, and I live right around the corner from there, and I thought that building was abandoned, and when I walked inside and they were building an airplane, I was so, I was so impressed. So I think that this program, Pathways to Success, is so vital that our community is aware that our children are, do have these opportunities, and I think it's wonderful, and I thank you for all your time and invested in this project.
Thank you, yeah. We will be highlighting the Future Ready Centers. You know, we have the one at North High for manufacturing, and then our new one for health science, so that'll be part of Pathways to Success, too.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
So when the students are interested in programs that aren't available in their school, what is the process for them? Say, say somebody from West wanted to be in the engineering program and build the airplane, what would be the process for them to do that?
So it just depends on the pathway. There's a couple of different answers to that, and again, we're trying to be creative with some of these options. A lot of our pathways, we offer at every high school. So early childhood, teach and train, culinary, for the most part, maybe not the Northeast Magnet, but everybody else offers those. Then there's some that we, we only offer at certain places, like the Future Ready Center, but we have students from all over the district coming to the Future Ready Center for that. So those future, that's part of the model for the Future Ready Centers, is to have it accessible to all kids. So we have kids, I think, from five high schools coming to North High to get that. Then we also have, you know, things that, you know, like our automotive programs are expensive, you know, ag is, is kind of niche and pretty expensive, some of our machining classes. So for those opportunities, you know, we've tried to be creative if, if a kid, you know, we had a kid at Northwest that went mornings to Northwest and then did fire science at South in the afternoon, and just work with individual kids that want those. But we also, we also are, with fire science, looking at a model that's, you know, where we treat, teach the first course, the freshman course remotely, all across the district, so any kid can get intro to EMS. And then the second class, we empower a teacher within the building, and then for the junior and senior level courses, they might come to South High for, you know, a block or something for every other day. So again, it just depends on the program. The, the ones that aren't super expensive are easy, you know, like accounting or something like that, which is software-based, they're easier to put in all the schools. The ones that are more, you know, equipment-intensive, we don't, we don't have the capacity to put it everywhere. So I think aligning systems across the district and trying to give kids those opportunities. But when it comes down to it, kids make choices, too, you know, and you can't be in orchestra and JROTC and every pathway, and, you know, I mean, you have to, you do have to pick some things, too, at some point, so.
So when you have, when you have a program that is, you can only have ten students or twenty students, if a student wants to participate in that program, do they make an application, or how, how does that work? How do you choose?
Well, that, that's a good question, and probably more answered at the high school level, because I don't know how every high school would do it. I do think there's priority given to seniors who need credits to graduate. We require a CTE class to graduate. Most seniors have picked that up along the way somewhere, but if they don't, then they would get priority over a freshman that, that is interested in it. But we're trying to do some things in our office to help the, the high schools better schedule that, to give kids, you know, kind of a, a more streamlined opportunity, because it's, what we don't want to have is Pathways to Success, and then say, well, it's not really a pathway, you can't get in the class. We want to try to have those open to, to as many kids as we can, but, you know, you can't have eighty kids in an auto shop safely, right? You know, there's, there's capacity issues, too, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I appreciate your chart with the gears on it, because it became very clear to me tonight what we meant by the plus, graduation plus. Because I had sort of thought in the past that they took a CTE course and that gave them a plus. That's not at all true. They have to do one of these four areas in order to gain that plus on their, which is a much bigger task for them to do, it, for us to reach that eighty percent. That's the reason we only had twenty-five percent last year.
Right, right.
We're going to have to do a lot of marketing and selling to our students to help them to understand what it is that they need to do to be able to get one of these four areas completed in order to get the plus on their diploma.
Yes, yeah, and that, that's kind of the part of the origin of Pathways to Success. And, you know, we market to business and industry, we market to the community, but we, I don't know how much we marketed literally to our students, like we're trying to do with this, so.
Yeah, because I think there's some confusion out in our student ranks about how they get that as well.
Probably so.
I mean, they understand, I take a course, I get college credit, that's easy, we've done that for years. But the other three, we have not.
Right. Yeah, they just naturally might get a credential opportunity by going through a pathway, but they didn't know that was going to be the opportunity at the end.
Right.
So we're trying to really emphasize that.
It's kind of like you have to get a minor in college.
Yeah.
And sometimes you just fall into it because you happen to like social studies or whatever.
Exactly, right.
But this is going to be much more intentional, and I guess my question is, as we begin to do the individual plan, starting in seventh grade with our students, do we put that kind of emphasis on, here's what these four things, what you'd have to do to get it?
Well, I don't think we've done that intentionally yet, but that is our plan. As, as Laura Barker in our office always says, you know, the individualized plan of study is a marathon. So we're incrementally every year, you know, we won the Copper Star Award from KSDE the last two years for our work on IPS, so we made great success. But yeah, it, it needs to come down to that student level and really back to their plan. So I want to be a, a, you know, a groundskeeper, I want to be an architect, I want to be a, a fitness instructor, whatever. So then what cred, you know, working from there, what credentials do you need? What pathway do you need to take? Because we shouldn't be taking college credit just to be taking it. We should be taking it as part of a plan.
To help us get somewhere.
To help us get where we want to go. And kids can have multiple plans, and plans change, and we want to leave room for all of that as kids grow and change, but, but not having a plan is not a great option either, you know, and just kind of floating.
And I think that's part of our challenge in the next few years, is to help educate our parents and our students what this truly means.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Diane?
Kelly, I might have missed it, but how many, what percentage of our high school students are participating in a pathway?
Well, that's a good question. And it really depends on how you count it, you know. So what we, the, the metric we use for our state and federal reporting is called a concentrator. So a concentrator takes two credits in a pathway, so two full years in a pathway. That, that counts you as a concentrator. That doesn't mean you get the credentials necessarily, it doesn't mean you get the work-based learning, it just, that shows us success. Well, some kids might get that, not by accident, but you know, not, you know, they may just like cooking, and that's not their career path, but they end up taking two classes in that, and they're a concentrator, where their real goal is to be, you know, a doctor, and they're in the health science pathway, too. So I could, I'd be happy to share, we, the concentrator data is what we live and breathe with Perkins and all of that stuff, so I'd be happy to share that with you guys, too. So I'd be happy to share that with you guys too. That gives you a feel for kind of health of our pathways and where we're at.
Yeah, I'm just more curious. Is it 20%? Are we getting closer to that 70%? Like where, where are we with that?
Yeah, just participating in a pathway, I would say is probably 60 to 70%. I mean, it's very high, yeah. A part of that's because it's a graduation requirement.
Right.
But, but yeah, I mean, I think most of our kids are taking pathway courses, you know, all the time. Now whether they persevere and like it enough to take, you know, two full years of it and pass it and all of that, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Dr. Thompson?
I ju, I just want to close by saying that this was a hefty lift. If you guys remember that we're here, I don't know who all was here, but when we did our strategic plan and when we were out listening, our families told us that they wanted us to just quit talking about, we, all we do is talk about, go kids going to college, going to college. And they wanted us to really spend some time thinking about and rebuilding our career in technical ed because there are so many jobs out there that kids can get credentialed and go out and make a good living. And people were saying to us, you've got to build some infrastructure there. And so this is the beginning of our work. We just kind of, I mean, we, we, we tried to figure out what it was that we wanted to do. We did a lot of listening and now the infrastructure, we've always had career in technical ed, but not to the point where we have market value assets, we're making sure that we're collecting data. We just had the career in technical ed, but there was no really, no data. We didn't know how to collect the data, what we should be looking at. And so it's just been a lot of effort from staff in the buildings, outside of the buildings, our community partners, all working together to try to build an infrastructure where we have a solid career in technical education portion and college credentials, our credits that they're receiving and making sure that it's comprehensive, that it's robust and that it leads to somewhere, they're just not taking a whole bunch of classes just to be taking them, but that they're utilizing their individualized plans of study and they're purposefully taking classes that will lead them to something that they're interested in and they want to do. So that has been the beauty of it. When you talk to kids about this, they're really, they, they start to get energized and self-motivated because these are things that they want to do, right? And I think that has been the beauty of this work is really seeing the kids find their interests, their passion, and then begin to take, make steps to get there. And so that's something, I just want to make sure that everybody understood that this, all this is purposeful and we've done a lot of listening. And to our community, thank you for expecting us to move in this direction because it really has been a game changer for many kids that have graduated and gone on and used those credentials and things to, to make a living for themselves. So I appreciate the report, Mr. Billfield.
Diane.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that as well. I, I'm actually quite jealous that this wasn't in place when I was attending school here because it would have been very helpful. I ended up going into construction and being a small business owner for my entire adult life. And so I could have gone through this and benefited greatly from this. And then also my husband's in aviation. He's actually looking to try to build his own airplane soon, so he, he could have benefited from this as well.
We need mentors.
So this is, this is very real tangible stuff and I really appreciate the work and the effort that's gone into this because not everybody needs to go to college and get a four-year degree and go into debt for a, a middle management job or to own their own small business. There are very real skills that we can teach and I think you guys are making great strides in doing that to be very, very practical. So thank you.
Ernestine.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm the cheerleader for this and I, yes, I'm, I'm real proud we're tooting our hearts. I do want to push that we really do need to do presentations that to not just the parents. I think it's exciting what we're going to do on the 20th, but I also want the world out there to know, the Wichita world at least. I'm tired of having people saying, how come you don't teach shop anymore? How come that my kid, that the kids can't take woodwork anymore? It's like, we've got so much more in there saying, well, I don't, I don't think so. I haven't heard it. Excuse me for mimicking people, but I'm really tired of hearing this over and over that we aren't doing what they used to do and I think the public needs to know. This is so spectacular. I will add to you, add this, that this is something that they're not doing in the Kansas City area. They are not doing it in the Omaha area. They're not doing it in Bismarck, North Dakota area. Now, I haven't gone south, so I don't know, but what we're doing here is a model, an exciting model that the whole of the Midwest, the whole of the central plains can, can copy. And I think it's exciting that you're doing it in such a way that, well, we figure out how to, you know, how they can do this and get some credit and how they can do, get entrepreneurial skills and this sort of thing. But the world needs to know that this in Wichita, Kansas, that we are doing this. And this is going to be, the, the whole community is going to know this as our students graduate into the community and are kept here at home because they've got the job skills that are needed. And I think it's going to bring businesses to Wichita. I think this is an economic driver for the city and for the community.
Well, I, I could mention, this may be what you were going to say, the night before the 20th, on the 19th, we are having a VIP business event, yes. So I think I mentioned that last time, but we're, so we're bringing in our business partners from the golf tournament Strategic Partners Advisory Committee, so at least some of those people will hear it. And truthfully, this event on the 20th, I mean, it's open, we're targeting parents and kids, but really any community member is welcome to come.
Can I show up in my cheerleading outfit?
Well, I'll be sad if you don't.
With my horn, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This was a board report, so we'll move on to the next item. Patrick.
Next item, executive session.
I move that board recess into an executive session to discuss a matter involving potential litigation with the board's legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 9:20.
Second. Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl to move into the executive session.
Are we going to vote on their gadgets?
Yep. Motion carries seven zero.
9:20.
9:20. The board is returning from executive session, no action taken. We are going to, before the, we have the second executive session, we will go ahead and do the consent agenda first. So I will start with Diane's side. Diane, do you have any consent items to pull?
E3.
E3? Any other ones?
Nope, that's it.
Ernestine? Stan, I have no items to pull.
Nothing to pull.
Kathy?
C3.
C3, I believe, has been withdrawn. Is that correct, Patrick?
C3, that's under per, equipment for future ready set, or yes, that is withdrawn, you said.
Any other items? Kathy?
No.
Cheryl? Hazel?
No.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda items except for E3. Moved by Stan, seconded by Ernestine on the consent agenda. Motion carries seven zero. Diane, E3.
This is for schools for fair funding and their stated goals here say that it's to monitor school finance issues to ensure full implementation of Gannon reforms and to preserve the adequacy and equity of the school finance formula. My issue is that this is a court decision that's already been decided and they're wanting us to pay $52,000 to monitor a court decision. I do not believe this is the best use of our funds.
Cheryl? I'm just waiting on a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
The, part of, I, I've been digging into this to try to figure it out because it is a court decision now. It absolutely is. But we are literally a year away from that court decision not being monitored any longer. And they have new goals, which actually these new goals, they've been working with, monitoring school finance issues, preserve the adequacy and equity of the school finance formula. And they are working in Topeka on those goals. As I was looking at the, how much we've spent, for every dollar we spent, because we pay a dollar and 15 cents or a dollar and a little bit for every student that we have, for every dollar that we spent, we have gotten back $4,615 for every student because we were with the, the fight for the Gannon case. That equates to, we've spent $2,347,29, and we have gotten a return That's a huge return on our investment. And I would like to see that we continue to stay with this for at least the next year or so and see what happens once the courts quit, quit monitoring this because that's what they've said they're going to do. I think it's money well spent for our community. If we can get $110 million off of a $2 million investment, that's huge.
Does anyone have a motion? Or any other, or a more discussion?
I, I move that we accept the schools for fair funding. I second.
I heard Julie first. Moved by Cheryl and seconded by Julie. Diane, discussion?
Yeah, I guess my issue is that we're using taxpayer money to monitor a court decision to sue taxpayers. And I, I, I feel that we're called to be good stewards of what we've been given and all the dollars that come in are from taxpayers, whether it be federal, state, or local. And I would hope that we can have another avenue to discuss with legislators for state funding besides going to the courts.
Well, I think what we're, what they're doing now is they're monitoring the school funding issues and they're preserving the adequacy and equity of the money that we're getting. And to me, it's worth it. It's worth what we're spending.
Ernestine?
I think the real issue here, whoops.
The real issue here is the equity, that for so many years, I guess it was like 94 to, when did Gannon happen, about 2007? That it was not adequate, it was not equitable. There were certain students of ours that were not adequately funded and educated. And so the real issue to me is how do we make sure, it's not just an issue of, of gee, if we can get a lot more money, but if we can get enough money so that we can be, we can adequately bring those students that are the most difficult, that are in the most difficult situation. You know, and all of us know that about 75% of the students in Wichita are from families that are on free or reduced lunches. These are the ones that are most likely in the state of Kansas to be inadequately funded, inadequately educated, and we can only make up for those inadequacies if we have money to do it. So to me, the issue is we are being the stewards for our students. It's not just so that we can get some bucks, but it's that we're being the stewards, looking out for our kids so that they don't get double-crossed again. Because one of the things that the state legislature does is, is that it doesn't think as a group. It doesn't think as a mob. It thinks as individuals who are saying, well, I'm going to run for office next year and when I run for office, if I can cut taxes for the, this, then that'll help. I don't think that they've got an evil intent, but the thing is, is that there is a natural tendency to find, to try to find ways to shave off the money that is for schools. That's why that we finally had that lawsuit was because they kept shaving and shaving and shaving. And finally, we went to court because there was, there is a standard, the Rose Standard, as to what is an adequate education. And we're trying to be in behalf, stand in behalf of our students to get that adequate education and to have the money to do it because just having a goodwill, it's not necessarily going to happen.
Kathy?
I tend to agree with you, Diane. I was at the state fair where I was listening to the debate between the governor candidates. And the current governor, Kelly, said that our schools are fully funded right now. And if that's the case, then I don't see why we would need to continue to pay to get back because the history shows with 259 is that money fixes the problem and it doesn't. Money does not fix the problem. Money can help create programs that can fix the problem, but just, just to throw the money out, like, like Diane said, there could be other uses that we could use that $51,000 to. I'm not like a person that says, well, let's just see what happens. I, I'm, I'm a little bit more concrete than that, so I, I agree with Diane.
Any other discussion or debate? Hazel?
Yes, I have a question. So the $51,000, who, who does that go to?
It goes to schools for fair funding.
It's a payment directly to them.
Yes.
Okay.
Ernestine?
Kathy, part of the reason that I'm so suspicious is because we, they did, in the first case, the courts ruled and looked at the funding that was given to the kids especially. And then the very first, next, I think it was two years later, they didn't meet the agreement that the courts had told them and they had agreed. So then we had to go back to court to make them obey, so to speak. And this happened time and time again in which, given half an opportunity, they sneaked, they tried to sneak past without meeting the agreement. That's why that if it were, if it were just that we were just expecting that they were going to obey it, I would go with you exactly. But I'm, I confess that I've become a little cynical and a little bit burned with, if they're not having their feet to the fire, they're going to try to shave. And so that's why that I am thinking that we need to keep an eye on them because we've shown in the past that if they're not being watched, it, it gets shaved.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Hazel and then Cheryl.
What are the consequences of us not doing this?
I think the consequences would be what the ladies were discussing. If we don't have representation, legal representation, if the legislators decide not to follow through with their commitment, which is true, they did not, the, like, two times, it's once or twice they did not. And so if they choose not to this time, what will happen is we will be in major cut mode. So that means we will be reducing programming, not having funds to do the things that we have been doing that are starting to be successful for our children because the funds will not be there because we will be, we will be cutting. So that would be, the consequence would be, if they don't do what they say that they're going to do. So that would be, the consequence would be, if they don't do what they say that they're going to do. The end, you know, the index, we're, they're supposed to pay for the index increase. And if they don't, we will be cutting because costs will continue to increase. We will not get our increases to mirror that. And then that means that you'll have to begin to start decreasing your spending. Which means cuts to a lot of things, raises for staff. All the things that we've been able to try to begin to do will not be available for us to do.
Cheryl?
I've been on this board long enough, and when I first came onto the board were the years when, when they were not following the first lawsuit. And they were taking cuts from schools and transportation in lots of places. And during those years, I had to sit at this table and cut $90 million out of our budget. And that was excruciating. Because we were cutting things that were hurting kids and we knew we were. But we had to get to the bottom line where our balance was, our budget was balanced. I do not want us to do that again. I think that there is an advantage in having someone that's our advocate for kids. To provide equity for the kids that need it the most. And that's what, the reason why, you know, I don't like to spend $51,000 either. But the bottom line is, I guess I just don't have the trust in Topeka. That they're not going to move back into what we had before. And I do not want this board to have to cut $90 million again.
Ernestine and Kathy, and then we'll, then we'll vote.
Okay, I just had one comment. If the governor said we're fully funded, that's inadequate, I mean, that's inaccurate. Because even just looking at, they've always just done special ed at 70%. And this year, wow, wow, they came up to 90% of what it costs. But not 100% of what it costs. We had to get the rest of the money out of, out of regular ed to continue.
And, and you know, I'm always going to correct information that goes out inaccurately. It wasn't, we are not funded by special ed by 90%. It did not go up to 90% at all.
And I'm just repeating what I heard.
No, I'm just, I'm not on, I'm, I'm going to get out of the conversation. But what I want to say is, is, I just want to correct Ms. Ernestine, that's all. Because it is not 80%, I mean, it's not 90%.
That's all I'm just saying is that the governor saying that was, we're funding up to the level that we've done in the past. And that's what feels like full funding, is because we've at least gotten to where it was in the past. But it, but it's not.
Well, I heard the governor say, our current governor, our schools are fully funded. And I would, I would echo what, not echo, but Cheryl.
That happens to me all the time.
Okay, I'm hearing two different things. Are we depending upon this money? Is this money part, so if we didn't get this money, we're not losing anything?
Yes, if we're losing $110 million.
But is, is that in our budget?
Yes.
So when we voted on our budget, this was already in place? So why are we voting on it again?
This is the organization. This doesn't have anything to do with the budget. The money comes into us, but we're voting on, do we stay with Schools for Fair Funding? That's what we're voting on.
But according to what you just said, it's in the budget, so we are staying with them. So we already decided to stay with them before we voted on it.
This isn't in the budget, this.
Is this $51,000 in the budget right now?
We would have it, but it's not earmarked.
It is in the budget right now, Susan? Okay, so if it's in the budget right now, it's already been decided that we're going to go ahead and continue with this to get the $51,000 that's in the budget.
That's, that's, I'll let Susan answer, I'll let Susan answer that question. Thank you, Ms. Willis.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. The question was, is Schools for Fair Funding budgeted? The board actually adopted a resolution to support Schools for Funding in 2019. Since that date, we have been setting aside in the legal department budget. An amount for Schools for Fair Funding that the board does vote on annually to support. If the board would choose not to support Schools for Funding, that $51,000 would remain in the legal department's budget for use in other areas. But it, the legal department is out of the local option budget, not the general fund.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Thank you. We may vote as soon as he hits the end.
We're voting?
We are voting. Kathy, one more try.
I, I didn't even try.
Okay.
I'm still thinking.
Okay. Motion carries six to one with Diane Albert voting no. Thank you, everyone. And Patrick, going back to executive session, I'll just move to Julie for her second motion on that.
I move the board recess to an executive session to discuss matters pursuant to the exception relating to the security of the board. The schools, school buildings and facilities, or the information system of the school. Under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 9:55.
Is there a second? Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl. To move into executive session. You want to do a hand, okay, we got it, it's up there.
What time are we to come back?
Motion carries seven zero and, and we're returning at 9:55. Board of Education meeting is reconvening. No action necessary from executive session. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item? Policy, first review, proposed consolidation of Board of Education.
That was under consent, that was under consent.
This is the fir-, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to finish, proposed consolidation of Board of Education policies.
I know 200 came out of the discussion in our workshop. 850 and 900, 850 maybe a little bit out of our workshop as well. 900 as well, so if, did anybody have any questions or concerns? Cheryl?
Yeah, I just wanted to. Here, I'll turn that on. Julie and I did meet with Dan Lawrence, our attorney, and with Patrick. To go through these policies, because we had discussed them at our retreat. And we put together the things that we think you, I mean, we, we took good notes and we came back in and corrected the policies. The way you, you had directed us to. We, in policy 200 on 3D. We added in, what we were looking at is. We currently, and for several years, have had the past president on the agenda review board, the planning agenda. And that's what we added in here, taking out the rotation and so on. So that we are matching to what our current practice is. On that same policy, on six, the general meeting procedure, 6A. We again made the correction so that it matches to what our current policy or actions are. And in 10E, we actually took that and split the old E into an E and F. Because we're through the, the height of COVID, we hope. And so now this, the addition, what we took out and what we added in. Were ways that basically we don't vote if we're not here. But there can be exceptions to it, and we wanted to allow that to happen. You have to go through the board president and so on in order to make that happen. Then on 11D. We added in some other guidelines for people who are invited to speak to the board. Both public people that are speaking and others. So we added in the words that you wanted. On policy. Policy 850. We just, the, we don't do that annually, that the board's night out. What we do is, we do it from time to time, so we simply change those words on number five. And there's one other. Policy 950. Again, we do not have retreats, we haven't had retreats in a long time. And so we pulled out that retreat because it, basically that doesn't match to the open meetings law. And we just simply don't have retreats now.
What policy number is that?
It's in policy 950, number two.
Okay, we, on our agenda here, we only have policy 200, 850, and 900.
950, this is 950, policy 950.
Good catch Julie, that is actually correct. That is, that should be 950 instead of 900.
950 instead of 900. Yeah, 950 is what we're talking about. We're on the agenda, it was listed as 900.
No, we.
It could just be a correction.
There's actually not a vote on this tonight.
No.
When we get to the second reading on this, we'll make sure that it says 950 instead of 900.
Yeah, so with those changes, basically. I think we have put everything in that we had talked about at, when we had the three, the committee of the whole meeting. And, you know, you can discuss it and we can change more if you want us to, but that's what, what we came up with, so.
I personally thought, thought the changes were consistent with what we talked about in the workshop. And I think I can support these changes. Any other discussion though? Diane?
On policy 200, page five, the board voting, so 10F.
Yes.
I think that either, needs to be either a yes or a no. We need to make the decision now whether somebody can remote, vote remotely or not.
I think there's a few times where there are emergencies. I think most, I think practical terms, there's two ways to think about this. One way is what's going to actually happen and in the, and that is. Somebody will come to the board president and ask for an emergency. And maybe there's a time sensitive item or something that is critical. Where we're going to need that seventh person or that person to vote. And so I think you're going to need to create some flexibility. If you put it in black, if you, if you're, made it either yes, they can vote, or no, they can't vote. Then you can end up with catching yourself in a bind. Because that, because we almost did that during the height of COVID a couple times. And so I think it'd be good to keep that flexibility there, but that's just one opinion. I was going to mention, while I'm looking for this one little area. If there's any other discussion about any of the changes, feel free to raise your.
We don't vote tonight.
Yes, it's tonight, tonight is just if you want to make some recommendation.
And I think Diane did make a recommendation.
I have, I have a question about that.
Go ahead Hazel.
So, so during the emergency, a board member may request of the board president. So that would be solely your decision to, or would you consult with anybody? Or would you, would that be a sole decision of yours, or whoever the president is?
Cheryl and Julie?
Well, we had put it in as the board president, because that's what we had said at the, at the committee of the whole meeting. It could be that it would come back to the board to vote if we allow them to vote or not.
Yeah, because if it's one person making the decision, then maybe it wouldn't be considered equal.
Except do you have the time to be able to bring it to the board for a vote? I mean, if it's a time sensitive thing.
It would have to come back, the only way that would work, and I'm thinking on my feet now. But the only way that I could see that that would work is that you would vote on it before you discuss the item that night. And are they, would they be allowed, or before you discuss the agenda, I'm sorry, not the item, the agenda that night. You would have to say, there has been a request from X, Y, and Z to be able to vote tonight. Because they have COVID or something like that. And, and then the board would have to say yes or no to that. That could be put in there as opposed to the way that it's ordered now.
Yeah, it sounds a little more fair, you know, that would be an equal balance between everybody. Instead of one person making that decision.
And if it were a tie, it fails, because that's the way we always are. So if somebody's absent and we haven't allowed them to vote, if we voted on it. If we, if we said we're going to vote as a board, we'd have six people instead of seven. So you could have a three-three. And the way it's always been is if you have a three-three, it fails. No matter what the vote is on. Yes.
So what constitutes an emergency?
Well, the way we had defined it before was that it was an emergency that was put on by the governor. And, and that's, that happened because of COVID. Because we couldn't meet the same way. And so we had, we were able to allow people to stay home if they needed to. And so we allowed them to vote because there was an emergency set by the governor. But, you know, that is, that is kind of over, I think, I hope, so.
So the, you know, emergency could be defined for a number of things. You know, an emergency could be, I'm, my parrot is dying in another state. And I'm going to take care of them. Or an emergency could be, I have surgery that day and I'm in the hospital. Or, or an emergency could be, you know, who knows what an emergency might be. But we were leaving the possibility for someone to be able to vote if they had an emergency.
And then I think.
Without defining what the emergency was.
And then there are times when, if the policy, if it was a, if this was a second reading that passed tonight. The way I would approach this, and this is just from one person. Is if someone came to me and said, hey, this is an emergency, but I also feel like I need to vote. Or I said, or I said, you know, we have a time sensitive matter on this, I need you to be able to vote tonight. Then I would go to the other board members and I would say, this board member is asking for an emergency. Do you agree that this is an emergency or not? I mean, in practical terms, that's how it would work right now. But if we want to, if you want to make a suggestion to Cheryl before the next, on how to clean that up even more, to make it more clear. I have no problem with that. I do think we need to be flexible though, on whether or not we allow emergencies to allow somebody to vote remotely. Because I think one thing COVID taught us is do not paint yourself in a black and white box. And then expect to be able to conduct business at times. And we, no one would have ever thought about the pandemic before this policy was made. Who knows what the next thing is? Cheryl?
What, what I have done, and believe me, this is not the wording. I'm going to work with Dan and get the right wording, but this is the concept. Is that during an emergency, a board member may request of the board president. That such member be allowed to participate in voting via teleconference. The board members, the remaining board members would then vote to allow or not allow the absent member to vote. And again, please realize that's not the exact wording, but that's the concept. Is that what you want?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with not, with having some wiggle room. I just want to be clear, because like when I was out of town for vacation this summer, I was told I was not allowed to vote remotely. And then we've had another board member that was on vacation that did vote remotely. And so for me, it's, it's kind of like, well, which one is it? I mean, how come one board member got? I mean, how come one board member got to vote remotely, but then I couldn't? Is there?
And, and I think that's exactly why we put this in here.
Yeah, is there favoritism being showed? Is there a vote that you don't want to make?
If we would have had this in place, I would not have been allowed to vote on, when I was on vacation, because that would not have been considered an emergency.
So, I just want clarity on it, where-
And just for the record, I was never told that you were requested to vote on your vacation, I was told that you were on vacation and that you would not be able to get the meeting.
Yeah, there, there might have been some miscommunication.
Okay, I just want, I just want to make sure, it was not me saying that you could not vote.
I'm not blaming anybody, quite frankly, it's just, I think because of COVID, there's some residual effects that are still being dealt with that need to be tidied up. And so I just want to make sure that we're clear, whether we can or cannot vote remotely, and favoritism or non-favoritism or whatever is not being, not at play.
And the way this board has always operated up until COVID was that if you were gone, if you were not on the board, at the board table present, you could not vote. That's the way it's always been up until COVID.
Right, and I understand emergencies and different circumstances. But I feel that this might be a little bit more, too nuanced, and I, and I appreciate your, your addition at the moment.
Yeah. Well, we can work with our attorney, get some word, wording down, and bring it back to the board at our next meeting. And it would be brought back in, and it would be a second read, but if we feel like we want to take it to a third read, we certainly could.
Okay.
The, the only thing that I personally don't like as well about that change is, is that the person having the emergency, if they knew upfront that they were not gonna be able to vote, then they might not tune in remotely. So, for example, my, my two examples, I'm in the hospital, just had surgery. If I, if I knew upfront, I'm not gonna be able to vote, then I might not tune into the meeting. Whereas if, if the president could tell me, yes, I believe that's an emergency and you will be able to vote, then I might be feeling really crummy, but I'd go ahead and tune in because I knew I had the opportunity to vote. I mean, that, again, I, I understand that not wanting there to be, you know, preferential treatment and all of that, and by voting ahead of time, it does take care of that, but, but there could be situations of an emergency that if you knew you weren't gonna be able to vote, that then you wouldn't tune into the meeting.
And that's the only reason I would like to keep some flexibility here, is because there's, sometimes there's gonna be, worst-case scenario, I mean, COVID's taught us anything, anything can happen. And so, there's gonna be times where the board president's gonna have to get information and on a moment's notice, figure out whether or not that member can vote or cannot vote. So I just want to make sure that we don't paint ourselves into a box that we can't respond if something has, does happen. Okay, I think we've got some direction. We probably will have to have more discussion on this, on these policies when it comes up for final reading, and like the superintendent and I think somebody else mentioned, if we still need some more clarification even after that, we do not have to have a final vote on that second reading until we're all comfortable. Okay. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
All right, I have just a few items that I think our community would want to know about, so I am going to hit them. I wanted to let everybody know, of course, we're in full swing. We are, there are two ways in which we are going to be providing some additional support for families and their students. And we are, have, there's two things. One is the homework hotline, and one is Revolution Now. The homework hotline is phone-based and serves all grade levels. And this service is available from three thirty to seven thirty, Monday through Thursday. That's homework hotline. We have a second tool that's available for our students and our families, it's called Revolution Now. And this provides online tutoring in thirty subjects for middle and high school students. The service is open afternoon, evenings, and weekends with a twenty-four-seven chat feature. Students and their families can learn more by visiting our WPS website at www.usd259.org/homework. Homework hotline, Revolution Now. Two opportunities. Also, today, we are launching a new support line for our high school students called Student Connect Hotline. And this is based on feedback from students over the last two years, and if you remember all of the feedback that we were receiving during COVID, we're continuing to enhance these services. This service allows students to call and speak with one of our district's licensed support staff about issues or concerns that may arise after school hours. This is not a counseling service. It is connecting kids to a caring adult and/or to resources. This particular piece, Student Connect Hotline, will help students with problem-solving processes and connect students, like I said, to the best resources available. Students can reach this resource from two thirty to eight thirty, Monday through Friday, on days when school is in session. Two opportunities to engage with students in the next coming week, there are some activities that I want to announce as well. The Arts in Education Week kicks off this Saturday at the Wichita Art Museum. We're celebrate art, the art in education, it's a free event on Saturday, September the seventeenth, from eleven o'clock AM to three PM. And of course, I'll be there, I'll do some greeting and meeting, we got our students, our band of jazz folks, I think Susan, your son, participating this year again. We have some wonderful jazz performances from our Wichita High School's east, north, south, and northeast, and southeast, will be there. And the gallery, we will have, you can walk around and you look at all the artwork, and then there's jazz music, and there's little, I think, appetizers you can purchase in the museum, so it's really cool. And it's free to anyone who would like to join us to celebrate the arts. We love our arts, thank you, arts. CTE Showcase, which Kelly has talked about earlier, is next week on Tuesday, September the twentieth, from five to seven. And this will be an event where we will showcase the CTE pathways, college credit courses, advanced programs, and career-ready opportunities that the district has to offer. And again, this event is also free, and it's an opportunity for our families, especially, I'm talking to our middle school and high school families, middle, high school kids that are already there, they may know a lot about this, but if we really target our middle school families so that they can learn more about what's happening at the high schools, so they'll know what's available, so they can begin to help us guide their students in the direction that they would like to go into. So with that being said, I will end my remarks, and thank you for the opportunity to share all of the cool activities and events coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education reports and requests.
Diane, do you have any reports or requests?
I just, I went to the letters training for the administrators and sat with a number of principals across our district and had great discussions with them on, basically, teaching children how to read. And it's a very complex process, and so, thank you to the kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade teachers, because it is a very, very complicated process. And it was, we had some great discussion on our table, so thank you for that. I also went to city council member, Brandon Johnson, has a District One breakfast that I attended on Saturday, and there were different organizations that serve our city's youth that were there, so, and a lot of them partner with Wichita Public Schools. So, Rise Up For Youth, Heroes Academy, and Prime Fit were all there, and we had good, good discussions at that breakfast as well, so, and then, along with many other conversations with people, that's kind of what I've been up to, so.
Thank you, Diane. Since we are getting into the late hour, I will skip my report request for this meeting. Julie?
I simply would like to ask the superintendent, I know a couple of board meetings ago, I don't remember the exact date, but you indicated that fairly soon we would be having a report on my earlier request regarding overcrowding at McAuliffe and Southeast. And I was wondering if that was on the plan for the October sixth board meeting, or if not that one, which one, you were planning on putting that one on?
Mr. President, is that o-
If we-
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Kathy?
I'm looking at you, waiting for you to do some more.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay. I too attended the letters, and I'm glad that we're getting back to phonics. Phonics is how I learned to read as a child, and I, I said, why, why are they graduating these teachers without teaching them this way of teaching our kids before they graduate college? And I was reassured that we are in communication with Wichita State to integrate this curriculum so that our teachers graduate knowing how to teach our students, so I'm very excited about that. So I'm gonna bounce back and forth from reports to requests. Because letters is so wonderful, I'm wondering if there couldn't be a presentation on it at the next meeting, and there's my piece of paper that I'm supposed to give to her, just, just thrilled with it. Also, I attended the, the opening game of Northwest High School football game on the second of September, and I passed out. And Commissioner Dennis and his wife Janet were there, and thank God they were there, they were the ones who called our first responders, and I want to give a shout out to three members of our community who have children in our schools, that's AJ Bohannon, Cornelius Broadnecks, and Amanda Toley. They were the ones that really came to my aid, and it was just a reaction to some medication that I was on, I'm okay, and there's no residuals from that. But I want to thank, thank them, there are very good people in our world, there are very good people in our world. And just my last thing is that, when I was looking through our policies, and this probably is gonna have to go to the two of you, there is no policy twelve thirty-two. And this is a form that our students have to sign with their guardian or their parent about zero tolerance policy sign-off form. So this just needs to be updated to reflect that we don't have a policy twelve thirty-two anymore.
That's it.
Cheryl?
Well, I was at letters too, I, I think we were all interested to make sure that things are going well, and I think they're going great, so I will end with that, thank you.
Thank you. Hazel?
I too was at letters at the Historic Riverside Elementary School, I love that school. Also, I, I also had the opportunity to attend the District One City Council Brandon Johnson's monthly breakfast. My interest was as, redistricting, when it, when it happens in January, I will acquire two schools, Lovature and Washington, from District One, so I felt like it was important that I get acquainted with the community. Secondly, as Diane said, these groups, Rise Up, Heroes Academy, Prime Fit, and there was also another organization there, CHD Boxing, focusing on mental health wellness through conditioning, heart, and discipline. And my, I was very impressed with Prime Fit, as they collect data for all of the work that they're doing with our students in two five nine. All of these organizations work directly with our students. And Prime Fit sees seven hundred kids every single day. They're in contact with seven hundred kids. And their, the data they collected was very impressive. They started, when they, they started the program, and to date, the behaviors of their students, eight out of ten have reduced expulsion. Academic success, ninety-four percent have improved in math and reading, and the attendance of the students that are in the program has, is ninety, ninety percent improved. So, I just want to give a shout out to those groups and, and thank them for their dedication to our students. And that's all.
Thank you, Hazel. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, new business?
Seeing no business, Patrick, next item?
Next item, adjournment?
I move adjourn. Second.
Moved by Cheryl and seconded by Julie to adjourn. Our next meeting is October third, I believe. Motion carries six zero.